Welcome, and I want to call this meeting of the Durham City Council to order on December the 16th, 2019 at 7:00. And certainly want to welcome all of you all here today and those of us who are watching our meeting on television as well. We're very glad to have you and welcome to Durham City Council chambers. Before we have our moment of silent meditation, I want to mention that over the weekend Durham lost one of its first citizens. Mayor Wensker Barak, aged 100, whose 100th birthday we celebrated here in these chambers not very long ago, passed away on Sunday. Mayor Barak was a tremendous champion of Durham. And when he took office in Durham, it was a time of strife, it was a time of controversy, and there were very important issues of civil rights and racial justice that needed, that our community needed to sort out. And Mayor Barak was a leader in that effort. He did many other wonderful things for Durham as well. And when we have our moment of silence tonight, I'll be remembering him. So could you please now join us in a moment of silence? And now, Councilmember Reese, could you please lead us in the pledge of the flag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues and members of the public, thank you for being here tonight. It's your practice to do so, and if you're able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Shul.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Alston.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now we'll move to our ceremonial items. And we have some wonderful ceremonial items tonight. And I'm first going to recognize Shelley Green, co-chair of the Durham 150 convening committee, and ask her if she would join me here for a wrap-up of our fabulous 150th, wherever you'd like, Shelley, sure, our fabulous 150th birthday of Durham. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Shul and members of city council. Our sesquicentennial year is almost over, and what a year it's been. More than 150 events were created and presented this year by community members, businesses, and organizations. And thanks to the generosity of numerous donors, we were able to award $100,000 in grants to make many of these events possible. Patrick Muklow and I will be back in a few months to give you an in-depth report of the entire year, including a final accounting of all the funds that were raised and dispersed. But we did want to do a brief recap tonight. And to begin with, I would like to publicly recognize and thank the Durham 150 staff. They worked so hard all year long to make this a great year. And they are here tonight. Janine Cargo, who is the project manager. Janine, if you want to just stand up. Shade Shakur, the project assistant. And Alyssa Noble, who is our social media specialist. Their role is coming to an end now, and I wanted you to see the individuals that did so much work this year, as well as thank them publicly for all of their work. I also want to recognize the in-kind hours of time and resources that were given by Discover Durham and the Museum of Durham History, and of course, some of the city staff as well. Susan Amy, Discover Durham's president and CEO, is here tonight, as well as Beverly Thompson. Where's Beverly from the city?
She's not here.
She's not here tonight, okay. And they both served on the convening committee. And Eddie is here as well, and I don't know if any other convening committee members are here, but Eddie Davis, thank you. I also wanted to give a special shout-out to Amy Blaylock from the city and Margaret Pentrack from Discover Durham, who led the communications committee, where so much of the public-facing work that you saw was done. And Margaret, and I don't know if Amy's here, but thank you to both of them. We've got a three-minute video capturing a few of the highlights of the year, and I hope you'll get a sense of how hard we tried to keep this year-long commemoration real and not just pretty it all up with only celebratory events that might miss some of the important conversations that Durham wanted and needed to have. The video features the new Durham anthem, written by Joshua Gunn, entitled "I Choose Durham." So let's roll that three-minute video.
(singing) I choose you. Yes, 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 always be home, we always be home. Yes, it goes, I choose you. Yes, yes, I said it. Let's go, y'all. I choose Durham. Make the best, both fans, don't get hurt. One vision, one city, one voice. Dedicated to the city of the brave. My home never ran, never will. Bull city in the sun, give you chills. I'm Durham, never ran, never will. Yes, yes. (singing) Ladies and gentlemen. City that grounds me. Come on, man. The city that grounds me. Yes, 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 yes. Where would I be? Where would I be? Where would I be? Yes, yes. Kids in the air, one city, come on, come on, come on. It goes, I choose you. Let's go. Yes, sing with us, sing along now. It goes, I choose you. Y'all sound so beautiful. There we go, there we go. It says, I choose Durham. From the heart, one vision, one city, one voice. Dedicated to the city of the brave. I'm Durham, never ran, never will. Bull city in the sun, give you chills. Take the open place, take the world, I'd rather be standing. To make it anywhere, gotta blow when you plant it. I feel it in the air when the city get frantic. And you can make it here, city built on chances. I really romance with girl, no power, we speak truth. Before you can fly, when you need roots. And if you choose Durham, then Durham gonna choose you. A place for everybody, and this song's for you. I choose Durham. Yes, y'all. For my home. I choose Durham. For my children. I choose Durham. Everybody stand up, watch your feet right now. Let's go, let's go. Come on, man. Yes. I choose you. I choose you. Yes, yes. Dedicated to the city of the brave. My home never ran, never will. Bull city in the sun, give you chills. I'm Durham, never ran, never will. Hit the top, y'all. It goes, I choose you. I choose you. Sing it loud, sing it loud, always be home. Always be home. One more time, say, I choose you. I choose you.
Thank you. It's hard to put 150 events in three minutes or less, but thank you again. I think I speak for everybody that's been involved. What an honor and privilege it has been to serve our city in this way. And let's look for the next 50 and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. And I want to say that Shelley was a wonderful grand marshal at our holiday parade. Great job. Thank you so much. And thanks to all of the people, many of them in this room, who worked on the various aspects of our sesquicentennial celebration, whether or not some of our wonderful staff, thank you all so much, our volunteers, and all the community groups and community people that came together to make it such a great celebration. And I should add also, thank you to Eddie Davis, our historian, our public historian. Eddie brought us a lot of wonderful history in the past year as part of our sesquicentennial celebration. So thank you, Eddie. Next, we're going to move to... Next, we're going to move to our Neighbor Spotlight. And I'm going to... Our first one is going to be presented, our November 2019 recipient, Connie Becker and Brenda Barber. If you all would please come forward, and if Mayor Protem Gillian Johnson would come forward to help me do the honors.
So Connie Becker and Brenda Barber are the recipients of the Neighbor Spotlight for the month of November 2019. The Neighbor Spotlight Award recognizes community members that have gone above and beyond in volunteering their time to serve the community. This month, Connie Becker and Brenda Barber, residents of Creekside at Bethpage, were nominated and selected because of the wonderful work they have done in their neighborhood, including, but not limited to, organizing a medical loan closet to meet residents' needs for medical equipment at no charge, organizing countless health and wellness seminars and training sessions for community members, such as Vile of Life and Get Your Affairs in Order, organizing a network of volunteers known as Pay It Forward, where neighbors help neighbors, organizing others to get involved and make a difference in the lives of others around them. Congratulations, Ms. Becker and Ms. Barber, for being the Neighbor Spotlight recipients for the city of Durham, and thank you for all the work you do to improve our Durham community. And I can see there are, but any other residents who are here to support them, feel free to stand. And if you'd like to be in photos, you can also come up.
Congratulations. Right to have you here. Come on up, everybody.
Look at this. We brought the whole community. We love it, we love it.
We really don't deserve this. It's this community that deserves this. We may have had some ideas and got some things going, but the community is what got it, kept it rolling. It's an awesome place.
I know. Y'all should do it.
That shows what kind of community we have. It's wonderful, and we're proud to be part of Durham.
This came just in time. Congratulations.
You have to put the sign in your yard.
Oh, yeah, we'll come. Oh, sometime.
Thanks again.
Congratulations, fantastic. Thanks for what you do. It's amazing. All right. Thank you all so much and congratulations. And now we are going to have another Neighbor Spotlight presentation, and this will be the presentation to Thelma White from PAC4, and she is our December 2019 recipient. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Deidre Anna Freeman if she would join me at the podium to do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Shul. This is such an honor, given this lovely lady, this young, young lady.
Like I need to present?
Yeah. Thelma White is the recipient of the Neighbor Spotlight Award for December 2019, and the Neighborhood Spotlight Award recognizes community members that have gone above and beyond in volunteering their time to serve in the community. Ms. White is a resident of Emory Wood Estates. She was nominated and selected because of her work, her wonderful work she's done in her neighborhood, including, but not limited to, helping to maintain neighborhood safety by patrolling the neighborhood and reporting suspicious activities, helping elderly residents with their trash bins, offering landscaping advice to others to help them care for their property, and so many other things that are not on this list. Congratulations to Ms. Thelma White for being the December Neighbor Spotlight for the city of Durham, and thank you for all of the work you do to improve our Durham community. If there's any other, if there were any other residents, if there are any other residents that are here and showing up in support, please stand, and if you'd like to come up and take photos as well, please, please do that. And family.
Come on up and join Ms. White here.
Yes, congratulations. And I have done, as you see, this is my, part of my family, my immediate family. And it has been an honor to adopt my neighborhood, and it's an honor to be able to be the president. I've been it for, ever since 2020. It's been an honor, and I really enjoy working and living in the Emory Wood Estates community. And I know that everyone else enjoys their community and working for it, too. Thank you for this honor. And one of my neighbors sent my name in, I was hoping she was going to be here tonight, but she had to work. Her name is Quincy Tate. I know some of you all know Quincy. She's two doors down from me. Thank you, and God bless, and Merry Christmas.
Congratulations, Ms. White, for all the fabulous work you do in your neighborhood. And thank you, Councilmember Freeman. And now we're going to move to another really great recognition, and this is for the Camelot Academy Cross Country Team and Magdalene Sims, their coach. And if you all are, I know you're somewhere out here, please join me at the podium. And I'm also going to ask Councilmember Vernetta Alston if she would join me to do the honors. Come on up.
We'll wait. While we wait for everyone to make their way up here, I just want to say I had the pleasure to attend one of the cross-country meets that Camelot Academy participated in this past season, and I can attest in my formal capacity that they are very fast. Take that for what it is worth. So thank you all for joining us. The Camelot Academy Cross Country Team won the Central Carolina Athletic League 5-kilometer championship, which is the highest championship for their league and will be recognized tonight. Let's see. Everyone knows what it is to start a piece of work, either intellectual or athletic, and feel stalled. Far fewer are persistent enough, patient enough, to see this work come to fruition. Five years ago, when a small group of students petitioned Camelot Academy to create a cross-country team, no one could have imagined what fruit their labor would yield. Five years later, the smallest school in the league has, for the first time, won the Central Carolina Athletic League championship. This season, more than half the runners beat their personal best with senior Mac Taylor, setting a stunning course record of 17 minutes 55 seconds. Is that right? Okay, that's, that's very fast. So I will kind of introduce just briefly all the runners and then invite their coach, Magda Sims, up to say a few words if she would like, and then we'll take a photo. So first, Mac Taylor, first place, league record, 17 minutes 55 seconds, that's you. Yes, great, thanks, Mac. Jackie Winslick, first place for females, female runners. Maya Callen, third place, female runners. Patrick Ireland, Alec Corless, Travis Fountain, Ethan Salome, Ryan Rosconi Warner, Seth Hurley, William Harrison, Dylan McGlinn, Tolly Daniel, Alina Hongfu, Michael Lorente, Mira Salimi? Salimi? How do I... Salimi, there we go. Tyler Wilson, Cooper Terry, Hardit Bhutani, Ziggy Lim, and coaches Magda Simmons and Tom Mitchell. So on behalf of the mayor and the council, a hearty congratulations. This is a wonderful accomplishment.
So yes, indeed, the smallest school in the league has won the Central North Carolina League championship. And as was said, with stunning athletic achievements, Mac Taylor, 17 minutes and 55 seconds for five kilometers. Now, as stunning as these athletic achievements are, I think what is truly incredible about this group of young people is the fact that this sense of camaraderie and leadership that was demonstrated throughout the entire season. What's most impressive, for example, is whenever some of our most junior runners struggled to complete a 5K, the teammates would join along and run that last lap with them, encouraging them to finish. The fact that they made it a part of their team culture to encourage and cheer on all runners, regardless of what school they're attending. And we believe that these feats and this display of character is, compared to any physical accomplishment, quite extraordinary. And crossing the finish line seems like a mere, mere accomplishment, considering the great character and abilities and leadership that these young people have displayed. So thank you again to the city council and to Mayor Shul for inviting us here this evening. Have we, can we have some of the parents maybe come up and take pictures?
Definitely full yearbook spread. Thank you again.
Congratulations. Thank you, Coach. Good job. Good job, everybody. You the record scorer? Good job. Thank you. I coached a lot of high school sports myself, and I know the agony and the ecstasy. Congratulations to your team for this great accomplishment. And our final ceremonial item tonight is a proclamation for Human Rights Week and Bill of Rights Day. I'm going to ask Joan Walsh if she would come up to accept the proclamation, and ask Councilmember Charlie Reese if he would issue the proclamation on our behalf.
Almost Walsh is coming up. I'll just say that, was that 17 minutes and change for a 5K? My personal best is about twice that, so it's amazing. Just one moment. All right, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then Ms. Walsh is going to say a few things. Whereas the city of Durham is home to a diverse population and is committed to the human and civil rights of all its residents as guaranteed by the Bill of Rights. And whereas on October 20th, 2003, the city of Durham adopted both the Bill of Rights Defense Resolution and the Resolution Supporting the Rights of Persons Regardless of Immigration Status. And whereas the city of Durham recognizes the importance of maintaining a climate of acceptance and solidarity, thereby decreasing fear and promoting the cooperation of all residents with law enforcement. And whereas over the past three years, there's been a disturbing increase in the arrest, detention, and deportation of immigrants throughout the region. And whereas the denial of human, civil, and constitutional rights begins with the most vulnerable, whose plight may be ignored or even accepted by those who consider themselves invulnerable. And whereas the silence of many permits such abuses to grow and spread, encompassing ever more individuals and groups who may be targeted by a despotic government. And whereas this situation represents a dire threat to our government and our way of life, as well as to the human, civil, and constitutional rights of each and all of us. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. Shul, mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim December 10th through 17th and December 15th, 2019, as Human Rights Week and Bill of Rights Day in Durham. And hereby urge all residents to join me in reaffirming our support of the Bill of Rights and of the civil rights and liberties it guarantees to all. I urge all residents of Durham to support the city's efforts to welcome immigrants and to resist, in whatever ways each are able, all threats and dangers to the human, civil, and constitutional rights of immigrants and others. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the city of Durham, North Carolina, this 16th day of Durham, 2019. And Ms. Walsh will come up and say some things.
Thank you very much, Mayor Shul and city council, for this proclamation. I'd like to ask anybody who's here in support to come up, if you would, please. Thank you. The assault on human and civil rights continues in our country, perpetrated and condoned by the the current administration and affecting immigrants most of all. As the yard sign seen around our wonderful town says, "First they came for the immigrants," implying that the rest of us may be next. We now have federal-level disregard and disdain for the truth, the rule of law, and the separation of powers so wisely put in place by our country's founders. We all need to do whatever we can to protect our most vulnerable neighbors, both because it's the right thing to do and because any of us could be next. And we need to secure the right to vote, this next year especially. If we don't have a different president by January of 2021, we may all lose our rights and our precious democratic republic to a dictatorship. Please vote, and please encourage everyone that you know to vote, especially people who don't live here in the Triangle. Thank you.
Thank you all. And we'll now proceed to announcements by members of the council. I know that Councilmember Reese has an announcement. Would you like to get started?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two announcements. First, I just wanted to thank all the city staff, especially Durham Parks and Recreation, who were involved in putting on the holiday parade in downtown Durham this weekend. Saturday morning was a fantastic event. For those of us who could participate, it's a huge amount of work. It's a labor truly of love that our employees make this work. And it's a logistical challenge, the likes of which few of us can really understand, I think. And I just wanted to say that I know we all enjoyed ourselves despite some perhaps unwise wardrobe choices that some of us made Saturday. But had a wonderful time. I just wanted to say thank you to our city employees for making that possible. The second thing I wanted to say is in relation to some of the remarks you made prior to our moment of silence. As you mentioned, former Durham Mayor Wince Graberick passed away over the weekend. He cast a tall shadow of our city, both literally and figuratively. And he was here earlier this year celebrating his 100th birthday. But when I learned of his passing, I actually thought not of that visit with us, but the first time I met Mayor Graberick, which was in this chamber about two and a half years ago. And when we named May 21st, Wince Graberick Day here in Durham, he delivered some remarks that I found very affecting. And I went home that night as soon as the video became available and then transcribed a portion of them. And I wanted to go ahead and read those. I've kept it since then. I wanted to read those for everyone tonight. I won't do it nearly as well as Mayor Graberick did, but here we go. "We're all better than who we are. And if we visit our conscience, we usually wind up at the right place. In all the challenges that Durham has in the future, let's put our conscience to work. We all have one. Think it through. We don't need riots and bombings and killings. Let's do it at the negotiating table. That's my sincere hope. When I was elected, I did what I thought I possibly could to improve all levels of our life in the city of Durham. And I felt that every time I had the opportunity, I had to really seize it, because that's what you need to do, seize the opportunity. But rather, I look at it more really as a privilege, as a privilege to serve the wonderful people of the city of Durham. In 1963, our country was rampant with riot. Today, our country is seriously critically divided. In Durham, we decided then that our diverse togetherness gives light to our soul. I hope that will ever be so in the future." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Those are wonderful words, and thank you for bringing the words of Mayor Graberick to us again. Other announcements. Anyone else have an announcement, councilmembers? All right, thank you very much. And now we'll move to priority items by the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Don't have any priority items this evening, but for the benefit of those in the audience, Agenda Item Number 18 is a public hearing item related to closing a portion of Urban Avenue. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the last several meetings. And when that public hearing is opened, Mayor, we will be requesting that the public hearing be closed and the matter be referred back to the administration. So for those who are here who may not want to wait throughout the evening, it may be late, that is what that'll happen. And so you agree with that, Mayor?
Yes.
There won't be any need for comment, and we'll refer the matter back for the administration. And at some time in the future, it will be, again, duly noticed and advertised when the public hearing is ready to be considered again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager. I don't believe we need to vote on that item.
Just wanted to know.
Thank you very much. And now I'll ask if there are any priority items, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Purtem, members of council. It's good to be with you this evening. I apologize, I'm a little under the weather. I have no priority items, thankfully, so good to be here.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to make some remarks about the volunteer appreciation reception tonight. And I wanted to thank all of my staff, my assistant clerks, Tanetta Amos, Sheila Bullock, and Laverne Brooks, who is your Boarding Committee contact. And then I wanted to thank the ladies in the mayor's suite, Juliette Black and Rachel Rudeboris. And then my deputy clerk, Ashley Wyatt, for putting on the event for all the Boarding Committee volunteers tonight.
Very nice.
Thank you very much. It was a wonderful event, and it was well-attended. And congratulations to the clerk staff. It was truly a great event. Thank you so much. And it's a really nice addition to our year, and it's become a wonderful annual event. So thank you. All right, and now we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is our items that the council has previously considered and can be approved with a single vote of the council. An item can be removed from the consent agenda by any resident or council member. And if it is removed, it will be considered at the end of the meeting. For the consent agenda, approval of city council minutes. Item one. Item two, grant agreement to fund STEM Equipment and Entrepreneurship Program provided by Emerging Entrepreneurs, Inc. Item four, interlocal agreement with Durham County to contribute funds to central kitchen feasibility study. Item five, resolution certifying declaring the results of the 2019 Special Bond Referendum. Item six, 2019 Clean Fuel Advanced Technology Grant Award and Project Ordinance. Item seven, Southeast Sustainable Communities Fund Grant. Item eight, Eighth Amendment to Assignment Agreement for the Durham Athletic Park DAP Operating Agreement. Item nine, First Amendment to Training to Work Reentry Grant Four, Contract Between the City of Durham and Eckerd Youth Alternatives Incorporated, DBA Eckerd Kids. Item 10, Stormwater Infrastructure Repairs, SD 2020-02. Item 11, Purchase Cooperative Group Citywide Automated Vehicle Location, AVL Systems And that concludes our consent agenda, and I will accept a motion for its approval.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our general business, public hearings. And just to reiterate, if you did not hear the manager, item 18, we're expecting to be returned to the administration and will not be discussed tonight. But we'll be getting now with item 14, the consolidated annexation at 1001 Olive Branch Road. And I'll ask for our report from staff.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Sanyak with the Planning Department. I would first like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law and affidavits of all notices filed in the Planning Department. Requests for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and zoning map change have been received from Arnaldo Escavera of Withers Ravinal for two parcels of land located at 1001 Olive Branch Road totaling 216.241 acres. This annexation is for a contiguous expansion of the city limits. In addition, the applicant has applied for a zoning map change from rural residential to planned development residential 2.944 and that associated development plan that stipulates up to 616 single-family attached and townhouse units. The area is designated Low Density Residential on the future land use map, which is consistent with the zoning request. If approved, the annexation petition and associated applications will become effective on December 31st, 2019. The case was associated with a voluntary annexation petition, which was BDG 180008, which the city council denied by a vote of four to three on June 3rd, 2019. Without the annexation, the city council did not have jurisdiction to act on the zoning case. Key commitments associated with this new case include a maximum of 90 dwelling units prior to a second point of access to the roadway network, additional asphalt for the construction of future bicycle lane, dedicated right-of-way for roadway improvements in a series of transportation impact analysis required roadway improvements, which are outlined further in the staff report. There are proffers for $61,600 towards the Durham County Public School System and $77,000 towards the City of Durham Affordable Housing Program. In addition, the applicant has offered the following proffers, which have been reviewed and approved by staff. These include: The proposed development shall include a mix of residential unit types with a minimum of 30% townhouses. No residential driveway shall be allowed off any street classified as a collector or highway within the local adopted plans. A minimum of 2.5 miles of off-road natural trails with limited disturbance shall be constructed by the developer and privately maintained by the homeowners association. The trail system shall include a stub on the northern section of the site to provide the ability to extend to the future Lick Creek Greenway system. Trail lengths and locations are subject to the approval by federal, state, and local regulatory agencies. Trails and amenities within a particular preliminary phase shall be completed no later than 18 months following the recordation of the final plat for that phase or prior to recordation of the final plat for the subsequent phase, whichever comes first. No less than 50% of the developed area shall be treated by constructed stormwater wetlands. The proposed stormwater control measures should attenuate the peak discharge for the following frequency storm events, 1, 2, 10, and 25 years. This commitment exceeds the requirement of attenuating only the 1- and 10-year storms. The post-development peak discharge shall not increase from the pre-development conditions immediately downstream of the site during the 50- and 100-year storm events. Approximately 26 acres of the site located northeast of Olive Branch Road are identified in the East Durham Open Space Plan, etching as a natural, NCNHP, it's a heritage program, county inventory. This development proposes the following commitments with regard to this section. A minimum of 12 contiguous acres within this section of the development will be preserved with limited disturbance to the understory vegetation as needed to implement recreational trails. Nutrient removal for this portion of the development north of the Olive Branch Road shall be managed to meet the target loading rate entirely by onsite stormwater control measures. And impervious coverage within this portion of the site shall be limited to 20% instead of the maximum allowed 24%. The Public Works and Water Management Departments have determined that the existing water and future sanitary systems associated within the Searls project will have the capacity for the proposed development. The Budget and Management Services Department determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately following the annexation. Additional information can be found in the staff report. It should be noted that the Durham Planning Commission, at their October 15th, 2019 meeting, recommended denial of the proposed by a vote of four to nine. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with a comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to adopt a consistency statement. I'm sorry, the first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to adopt a consistency statement, and the third is for the zoning ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Sanyak, could you talk about this having been noticed?
Yes, I mentioned at the beginning.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. We have heard the report from staff. I'm going to now declare this public hearing open. And I'm first going to ask if there are any questions for staff by members of the council? Any questions for staff by members of the council? Councilmember Freeman?
I had shared a few questions prior to the meeting around the cost-benefit analysis, and I just wanted to make sure that I noted also, I haven't received an update from the water treatment facility that's being brought online and recognizing how much is pulling from that. And so I just wanted to make sure I tapped your next question about whether or not I would receive that information before this evening was over.
No, and we did receive your email, and I know that there was a response. But unfortunately, that information pertaining to the specifics and the water demand was not able to be provided.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? All right. If the council has no other questions at this time, I'm going to ask that, we have several people signed up to speak on this item. This is a public hearing item, and I'm going to, let's see, I have one, two, three. I have four people signed up as proponents and two people signed up as opponents. And I think what I will do is I will give 10 minutes to each, both the proponents and the opponents. And if we need to add time after that, we can do so. I'm going to call, I have to speak here, Mr. Randy Herman, Mr. Chris Simmering, Arnaldo Etcheveria, and Brittany Chase as proponents. How would you all like to, who would like to go first?
In that order.
All right, fine. Mr. Herman, welcome. How do you feel about the 10 minutes? Do you think that'll be acceptable?
I think that should be fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Shul, and members of council. I have a couple of slides as well. I don't know if those are coming up. I'm not going to spend too much time on them, but I just want to run through them pretty quickly. There we go. Okay, so here is a summary of the project. As Ms. Sanyak stated, it's located at 1001 Olive Branch Road, about 216 acres. Under the current zoning for rural residential, it would be allowed to be developed up to 71 units, and we are requesting rezoning to PDR at 2.944, which would allow up to 616 units. That's a little bit less than three units per acre. This is the location of the subject property, located north and south of Olive Branch Road, just south of the intersection with Doc Nichols Road. And that triangle area to the north of Olive Branch Road is the area that Ms. Sanyak mentioned as being of particular concern. When we were before Planning Commission, Representative of the LRB Creek Watershed Association appeared and spoke about the importance of that part of the property environmentally. So since then, we have met with the LRB Creek Watershed Association and Triangle Land Conservancy and discussed with them our plans to limit the impact on that portion of the property. And that's what resulted in the text commitments that Ms. Sanyak read. This shows the existing conditions on the property. It is heavily, it is very hilly, it has significant topography. There are a number of streams running through the property. And all of these issues do affect the ability to develop the property. This shows the vicinity of the property with Highway 98 located at the north and Highway 70 at the south. This kind of gives you a sense of the location within the city of Durham. The existing zoning is rural residential again, although the adjacent properties are zone PDR at, again, a little bit less than three units per acre. So what we're requesting is similar to that. This property is located in the suburban development tier. And on the future land use map, it is shown as low-density residential, which is four units an acre or less. And again, what we're And again, what we're requesting is about three units per acre. We believe that this redevelopment is, or this project would be in keeping with the comprehensive plan, specifically these objectives that I've listed here, to bribe land in the suburban tier with development at low and medium densities, to assist in expanding homeownership opportunities, protect floodplain areas from inappropriate development because those floodplain areas are being significantly restricted under our development plans, and to construct and maintain a street and highway system through collector streets. We are going to be building a collector street kind of through the middle of the property, which would in the long term connect to the adjacent property, which is being developed by another developer. I would like to introduce the other members of the project team quickly. Speaking after me is going to be Chris Simmering from Mungo Homes. He's going to be speaking about the developers' vision for the property. Also, Arnaldo Echevaria from Withers Raffanelle is going to be discussing the technical aspects. He is the engineer for the project. And Brittany Chase is our traffic engineer, and she's going to be talking about the traffic impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Simmering, welcome.
Hey, good evening. It's good to be here. It's good to be back. We're very excited about this project. We were excited about it the first time. And since then, we've worked it around so much with everybody, got a lot of feedback from the leadership of Durham and the staff and the other groups that have interests in the area. And we feel like we've really tuned in on something that is going to be an exciting project for this area. We have 616 lots in it now. So we were able to get the density up as high as we possibly could on this piece of property. So we feel that it's going to be a great place for these 616 families to come into Durham and live. We were able to introduce a lower price point product than what we originally had. We don't normally get feedback from a council asking us to increase density and reduce price point. Usually, everybody's pushing us the other way. So we were very excited to do that. We feel we'll have options in the very low 200s, just over 200, available in this project at this location. Some of our single-family detached stuff is going to be in the high 200s, mid-to-high 200s. And we just feel like there's a real pent-up demand for this, especially given its location towards Briar Creek. We're excited about all the walking trails that we've got that will allow the people to experience the nature that's out there. And we're big amenities that they'll have in this neighborhood. So I'm going to turn it over to the technical people. They'll tell you all about our stormwater features and the networks of trails and traffic and all the infrastructure we're going to bring to this area. If you have any questions, you can ask me later. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Simmering. Mr. Echeverria?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Arnaldo Echevaria, for the record. Address is 115 McKinnon Drive in Cary. So I'm going to change the slide here. So I wanted to take the opportunity and present the development plan. Okay, there you go. As you can see, that's the post-development plan, which is very limited in terms of the information shown. That's the way that the rezoning process requires. It shows the main developable areas of the site, which are going to be designated for single-family or townhomes. You can also see how the streams are being protected and the buffers. Most of the streams, if not all, on the property are going to have riparian buffers, some of which are actually going to be covered by an additional 50-foot buffer based on the watershed overlay. We also show perimeter buffers along Olive Branch Road and along the perimeters of the site, north and south. So for orientation purposes, in this slide, north will be on the right side. So the thick dash line going through the middle of the site shows the collector roadway, which provides connectivity between Olive Branch Road and the adjacent future development along the west of the site. The dashed area, or just to the right of the sheet, represents the portion of the site that's covered by the inventory site identified in the Eastern Durham Open Space Plan, which we had an opportunity to work in detail with folks from the Triangle Land Conservancy, the LRB Creek Foundation, as well as Trees Durham. And that's basically how we came up with some of the commitments that Jamie read a moment ago. And I'm going to just take another stab at them right a little bit more detail in a minute here. So just another overall view of the site location within the existing sanitary sewer basin. That's the southeast regional leaf station sewer basin. This slide shows where the southeast regional leaf station is going to be located. The purple lines and green lines are being installed by the city, at least the solid line, the solid green line is. And as part of the development, we have two options. One, to build the pinkish dash line along the right side of the project through the green highlighted area, or propose temporary leaf station. Those are identified in the utility extension agreement. That's already been executed. So we are exploring both options and will work with the city as to which one is going to be the best alternative for them. And some of the commitments that we added include, like Ms. Sounyak mentioned, so a minimum of 30% townhomes. And that, like my colleagues just mentioned a moment ago, it introduces the opportunity to bring in some of the prices down.
Mr. Echevaria, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're going to add five minutes to your wall's time. Do you think that'll be sufficient?
That should be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. So the 30% minimum of townhomes, like I said, adds another product, some affordability to the neighborhood as well as diversity in the housing choices. So we've mentioned no residential driveways allowed on the streets classified as collector or higher. So the reasoning is to, it provides additional safety for the community members that are enjoying the facilities as pedestrians or bikers. So the collector street will have a set of bike lanes and sidewalk on both sides, so we want to make sure that that's not going to be a safety concern. The development also proposes a minimum of 2.5 miles of off-road nature trails for the enjoyment of the residence. They're going to be, like mentioned earlier, controlled by the developer and maintained by the HOA. And there's some commitment in terms of when those are going to be required, based on the plating phase. Another commitment is that no less than 50% of the development areas are going to be treated by stormwater wetlands as opposed to wet ponds, which are more efficient in terms of pollutant removal and enhancement and blend with the natural features surrounding them. Then we have some commitments in terms of the attenuation controls for runoff, which we go above and beyond what's required by the city and the UDO. And needless to say, we have done extensive engineering work to make sure that these are real commitments that can be achieved for the site. And then I wanted to mention on the northern section of the site, the triangular piece that's identified in the Eastern Durham Open Space Plan. So we're preserving about 12 acres of contiguous area. That's a result of the meetings with the Triangle Land Conservancy, Trees Durham, and the LRB Creek Foundation. They expressed some interest in making sure that this is going to be sort of an example project. They were very excited that we gave them the opportunity to sit down, which, from our perspective, we feel very excited that they actually were able to sit down and express their concerns and give us opportunity to address them on the site. So we're basically proposing these commitments in order to provide tree coverage protection as well as opportunities for the community to enjoy the natural features as well as save some of the open space for the potential of future species that, even though they may not exist near the area at this time, this location proposes the opportunity for them to move in in the future. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Brittany Chase, and hopefully, maybe not half as good.
Thank you.
Oh, it's on here, but, okay. There it is. Good evening, city council members. My name is Brittany Chase with Exalt Engineering in Raleigh, 304 West Millbrook. Exalt worked closely with city staff and NC DOT to prepare a traffic impact analysis, otherwise known as a TIA, to study the existing and future 2023 conditions of the roadway network surrounding the proposed site. The purpose of the TIA is to analyze the potential traffic impacts of the proposed development and to identify any roadway improvements necessary to mitigate the impact of the project traffic. The analysis showed that there are traffic concerns present under existing conditions as well as future conditions even without the build-out of the proposed site. The developer has committed to constructing roadway improvements that not only mitigate site traffic in the future, but will also address these traffic concerns that exist today. As shown on the figure, the developer will construct turn lanes at the proposed project driveways and widen Olive Branch Road to a three-lane cross-section in between the northern project driveway and the southern project driveway. The developer will also construct turn lanes at four of the surrounding study intersections.
I'm going to add five more minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah, five more minutes, that's a lot, but go ahead.
Thank you. The developer will also construct turn lanes at four of the surrounding study intersections, as shown in red on the figure. These intersections include Olive Branch Road at Doc Nichols Road, Olive Branch Road at Carpenter Pond Road, Leesville Road at Shady Grove Road, and Leesville Road at Doc Nichols Road. The developer has also committed to installing traffic signals at two study intersections if warranted. These intersections are Olive Branch Road at Carpenter Pond and Leesville Road at Doc Nichols. These roadway improvements, shown on the figure, have been approved by city staff and NC DOT. Based on similar projects in the area, the cost of the design and construction of these improvements is estimated to be over $2 million. It is also important to add that there are additional roadway improvements committed by other developments in the study area. City transportation staff has indicated that if these improvements are not completed as planned by others, these improvements will be required of this development as well. And those are shown in green on the figure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Chase, Mr. Herman, you have to wrap up remarks at this point.
The only thing I wanted to add is that, of course, of course, all members of the project team stand ready to answer any questions that any members of council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, now here, we have two people signed up as opponents, and they are Mr. Brian Callaway and Mr. Nate Baker. Mr. Callaway and Mr. Baker, welcome. Mr. Baker here.
He is.
Mr. Callaway, go ahead, thank you. Please give us your name and address, and the opponents also have 20 minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Brian Callaway of 307 Gresham Avenue here in Durham. And I wanted to start just by, for the record, stating that I have no direct financial ties to this project in any way. I also wanted to just open with a reading. "We believe that everyone deserves to live in a healthy community. Durham faces many threats to our city's health and sustainability, including global climate change and overwhelmingly car-centric development patterns. We should make land-use decisions that help combat urban sprawl, protect our watersheds, and preserve natural environments." That's a reading from the Bull City Together campaign platform. And it's a great, kudos to y'all, those are excellent words. And I want to encourage you now to put some deeds behind those words and vote against this today because I believe that this annexation and this rezoning exemplifies what you spoke about in your campaign platform. And, you know, you have heard this before, and there was a public hearing before the Planning Commission in October. Additional people spoke, and our advisory board voted four to nine in denial of recommending this to you. So the community and its advisory members have spoken in many ways. It is remarkable a bit to me to hear the cost-benefit analysis that was presented by staff earlier. I'll also say that I came to Durham by way of UNC, where I studied city planning many years ago now. And I actually grew up in Florida, and this exact type of development is one of the reasons I've wanted to study city planning. We know that this type of development has tremendous costs, both to the city, to our infrastructure, to our services that we can provide, but also environmental impacts, and especially in light of the climate impacts that we're all very well aware of. And we've made many moves in this community to address those. You know, we had, albeit contentious hearings in the past to help direct development towards downtown and densification. And Mr. Mayor, you'd made public comments in some of our local news organizations that one of the main thrusts of the EHC, for instance, was to mitigate our climate impacts. This is the best opportunity to shape and guide this city's development patterns by rejecting this annexation request and encouraging better development. It is remarkable, though, that our staff can vary in so many ways. When I was a planning student at UNC, I remember hearing many times Mitch Silver, a nationally-known planning director that they had on staff. He's since moved on to positions with New York City. But he said it very bluntly when he would go through Raleigh and tell folks, "Do you want your taxes to go up? If so, continue to allow sprawl." And that is precisely what this development would do. I'm a bit confused by the tunnel vision, maybe the silos that we make our analysis in. Because when we speak about even issues like affordable housing, when the house itself may be slightly more affordable, there's so many additional components. There's a transportation piece, the utilities piece. But in this case, the transportation piece is remarkable. I mean, where are folks going to go, grocery shopping? You know, we've spoken numerous times about the difficulties with single-family zonings, the history of single-family zonings. You, before you, this evening, have a single-family zoning, rezoning request. So it should be pretty clear, I would hope, that the answer should be no. This kind of development does not belong in Durham. Perpetuating single-family zoning does not belong in Durham. And we are on the cusp of rewriting our comprehensive plan as we speak. To watch an over 200-acre parcel be forever, forever locked into this very 20th-century development pattern is something that I believe that our future generations are going to be questioning. How did you do that? How did you know about the climate impacts? How did you know about what the city needed? How did you know and see the direction, the course correction that we've been making of concentrating our development around nodes and specifically downtown, and densifying these things? So I would ask this evening that you vote no for contributing to costly urban sprawl. You vote no? You vote no for perpetuating uncreative, single-family zoning? Vote no for increasing our community's climate impact? Vote no for putting a permanent blot on the periphery of our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callaway. And now we'll hear from Mr. Baker.
Hello, everyone. Nate Baker, 609 North Roxborough Street. I am on the Planning Commission, but I'm not speaking for the Planning Commission. It was interesting to hear from Brian just now. We don't always agree on things, but we did go to the same planning school, and so I think that we learned a lot of the same lessons. I think it's easy to kind of lose sight of the scale of this project. It is extremely large. It's larger than the Forest Hills Flum Amendment that you're going to be seeing in a little bit, 216 acres. Trinity Park is 262 acres, so it's almost the size of Trinity Park, which has a lot of uses, has a lot of housing types. So I wanted to come up here to ask city council to vote against this application because I think that voting for this application would be irresponsible. And that is acknowledging the hard work that has been put into the review of this by city staff, the professionalism of the development team with whom I did meet. I think that this application violates precedent that was set by city council in your original decision to deny this case. I think that it maintains and exacerbates Durham exclusionary built pattern. It eliminates gains fought for by climate advocates in Durham and increases greenhouse gas emissions, not just in total, but on a per capita basis. It prohibits the possibility of future transit options or makes it extremely difficult to have efficient transit options. I believe it contradicts many, many policies in the comprehensive plan, which I've listed out in my comments to you. I think that it threatens to have much larger consequences on land use policy as we do embark on the new comprehensive plan, and it doesn't meet the needs of our growing population. And I also do believe that this is fiscally imbalanced. In general, based on studies, many fiscal impact studies and cost-of-land use studies have been conducted around the country and in the southeast, more specifically, these types of developments tend to not pay for themselves when you do sophisticated cost-benefit analyses. And I also simply believe that it doesn't respond to the large and growing demand for walkable, livable, green communities that we want to advocate here in Durham. So planning and zoning can be very complicated, and it can appear very complicated. But I really do think that with annexation cases, we get to ask a very simple question of ourselves, and that is, what do we want the next extension of the city of Durham to look like? In this case, what do we want the next 216 acres to look like? So I think that if you think that we have not enough single-family housing stock, we have about 65% of our housing stock is single-family, if that's not a high enough percentage, and we need more sort of exclusionary, single-family-only developments, and if we want developments with streets and blocks that are just so long that it kind of renders them unfeasible for walkability so that there can't be any walkability within these 216 acres, and if we want the future of Durham to be without any type of accessible uses, including access to services for the daily needs of human beings, if these places shouldn't include sort of civic space to strengthen our democracy or employment uses that foster vibrancy, equity, and opportunity, if they shouldn't include green and sustainable building in this time of climate crisis, and they shouldn't weave in a fabric of missing-middle housing in a dense environment and sustain multigenerational living, if that is what we think that the next 216 acres of Durham should be, then we should vote for this application. If that is really the best that we can imagine as a city, then we should vote for this application. It would be our eternal imprint on this city. But if we think that Durham is better than this, and that Durham should be integrated and should be sustainable and walkable and should foster diversity and should foster transit accessibility, even if it's not next year or in two years, but using a development pattern where transit will be accessible in the next 10 years or 20 years or 100 years, and if we think that Durham should begin building with a climate and equity crisis on the forefront of our minds, and if we should begin the process, as many communities have, of transitioning from that built environment where over 80% of the population has no other option but to drive, which of course has many externalities, we should be building differently. And I know that we're in the midst of this comprehensive plan, and that is, of course, your consideration. I do think that that is an important consideration when we look at developments like this. And I also think that we cannot wait for the comprehensive plan to be finished before we embark on the necessary, simple UDO changes for developments like this and for other developments. Those UDO changes should increase developments with a compact variety of housing types, connected streets with short walkable blocks internal and external to the development, should include sidewalks and street trees, a variety of accessible and appropriate uses for employment and services, should protect and make accessible and celebrate green spaces, and should place homes within a quarter-mile of a variety of uses and a variety of civic spaces, should include multimodal infrastructure. And there are a variety of different ways that we can code regulations to be able to do these things. So my recommendation to you is that you do vote to deny this application. I know that that's very difficult, but I think that it's the right decision. We've spent a lot of time considering this and weighing all of the different options. I do think that is the responsible thing to do, and then it should be followed up with the appropriate UDO amendments to make Durham a sustainable and equitable and inclusive city that is taking an understanding of the climate crisis and taking strong action on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We've had another person sign up for this item, Ms. Peterson. Ms. Peterson, are you a proponent or are you an opponent of this annexation?
I have some concerns. How many minutes do I have, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Peterson?
It doesn't matter.
It matters to me, Ms. Peterson. This is a legal proceeding.
Against it. And I'll tell you why.
Okay, thank you.
How many minutes do I have?
You have three.
My name is Mrs. Peterson, Victoria Peterson, and right now, why I am against this, this vote, I am concerned about my city council. And I'm glad the city attorney is here tonight. The public needs to know that some of us, and I'm one, that there's a possibility that there's a person that is on this council that should not be voting. If we have this vote, and my question is to the city attorney, and she may not want to answer it publicly, but I would like to get an answer in writing. If it is true, and if the law finds out, there is a hearing on January 13th at the Superior Court dealing with the Board of Election, with the State Board of Election, there is a hearing. The hearing is about Durham City and is about our election. If it is true, if it is true, if there's a possibility that there is someone on this council that should not be on this council, my question to the city manager, not to anyone else on this council, my question to the city, no, excuse me, to the city attorney, if they vote on this issue, could it be challenged afterwards, after a decision is made later on? If we have a person on this council that should not be on the council? Is that a possibility?
Have you finished your comments, Ms. Peterson?
Let me finish.
You've finished your comments, Ms. Peterson, and then we will deal with your question.
No, Mr. Schuler, I'm not finished my comment, and I want some extra time since you're being rude.
You've got 1 minute and 15 seconds.
Mr. Schuler, I think you're a very rude mayor, but that's a whole nother issue. You're not going to knock me off my game. I'm asking the city manager, is there a possibility if somebody is sitting on this council and the court finds out or the State Board of Election finds out that this person is illegal and they should not be on this council? And you folks vote, and you continue to vote on various issues in this community with this individual on the council? If you find out that that person should not be on the council, what can the public do about all this voting that is going on with one of these individuals that is on the council? And, Mr. Mayor, I'm not asking you to speak. I'm asking the city attorney to address my concern about this voting that may take place tonight. That's the only person I want to hear from.
Ms. Peterson, you have nine more seconds.
Ms., the city attorney, do you mind addressing my?
I'm chairing the meeting, Ms. Peterson. And I'll call on the city.
But I'm asking her.
I will call on the city attorney at the appropriate time. Please take a seat, Ms. Peterson. And while you take a, once you have taken a seat, I have some comments for you.
No, so I don't want, I want to hear from the city attorney.
Ms. Peterson, you need to take your seat.
Mr. Schuler, I want to hear from the city attorney. If she does not want to address me right now, and you want to put it in writing, that's fine. But the public needs to know that there's a possibility that somebody sitting on this council should not be on this council. And I know you, Mr. Schuler, you don't want to address it, and you don't want to talk about it. But we have citizens in this community.
Ms. Peterson, you will be seated.
And the public needs to know this all, and that's why I'm here.
Ms. Peterson?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to hear from you.
Ms. Peterson, you have been abusing.
I do not want to hear from you.
You have been abusing our process for the last several weeks.
I've asked the city attorney to respond.
Ms. Peterson?
It's a public hearing.
And let me just say that you're.
I'm not, I don't want to hear from you.
Let me just. Ms. Peterson, I'm going to have you removed from this room in a minute.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to have you removed from this room.
Well, I don't want to hear from you.
Okay, you, Ms. Peterson, I will have you removed from this room in a moment. Your inferences about a member of this council are without merit. They're without basis. They have been ruled on by our Board of Elections and by the State Board of Elections. They're without grounds. They're without merit. And they're an indication of your prejudice.
Superior Court, January 13th, we're going to be involved on this issue.
Ms. Peterson, I will have you removed from this meeting unless you, I'm telling you.
Can she, can the city attorney answer?
Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, you have three minutes.
Sorry, but it's clear there was a little bit of a disruption. Can you repeat the question?
I don't have any question. I just wanted to, is there, I'm asking, I'm saying that you all have another three minutes, if you need it, if you would like to respond or, not respond to that, but if you'd like to expand on anything.
Okay, so I do have a few things that I would like to expand on, so absolutely, I'll take them all. Part of the.
It was unthinkable, wasn't it?
Say that again?
Yeah, you're right. Go ahead.
So I forgot to mention earlier that part of the work that we have gone back and re-engineered on the project also has to do with the preservation of water quality. So for the northern section of the project, which is within the Durham Open Space Plan, we are proposing that all of the pollutant removal that's required for the project for that particular section is done on-site with on-site stormwater control measures. And instead of going and using the allowable amount of offsite that can be buy-down for the project. So in other words, no offsite credits will be obtained for this section of the project that is affected by the inventory site overlay. So another component that we are also committing to is a reduced impervious surface for that particular section of the site as well, limiting it to 20% as opposed to 24. We have consolidated the infrastructure for the development in order to preserve more and build a more sustainable development for the community. And it's hard to tell from the development plan that's included as part of the application, but there's definitely walkability on the site. So it's a 200-acre site, right? So even though we have several streams, the development is being proposed in blocks and not cul-de-sacs that end in between, you know, confluences of streams. So this is going to be developed also in accordance with the UDO requirements for connectivity of a 1.4 ratio or better. We propose sidewalk on both sides of the streets, and needless to say, as previously mentioned, over two miles of pedestrian trails. So we understand that there's no grocery store within 100 feet of everyone's future home site in the community. But the last time I remember going to the grocery store and being able to carry everything back was when I was in college, living by myself. So right now, I live with my wife and my son. Every single time I go to the grocery store, there's no way that we can carry everything back just walking. And we're a small family of three. So the grocery stores go where homes go. So you cannot have one without the other.
Thank you, Mr. Etchivaria. All right, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this item? Is there anyone else tonight that would like to be heard on this item? All right, thank you. And now I'll ask if there are any questions or comments for the applicant or for our staff, by members of the council. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Sir Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for staff. Planning Department staff. Thank you.
What do you think?
Could you remind us, what's the impervious service maximum in this watershed overlay district?
So if the applicant is choosing the low-density residential option, the maximum would be 24%, which is what they have shown on the development plan. If there is an option to go up to 70%.
Right, in the northern part.
Yeah. And if you, and just as a reminder, as part of my proffers and also the applicant reiterated, on the northern part of the site, north of Olive Branch Road, they've committed to a maximum of 20%. So they've reduced the impervious coverage from 24 to 20%.
Thank you. Also, is there like a technical planning definition of sprawl? Or is that more of a generalized understanding?
I don't know that we have a technical definition. I think there's a general understanding.
Which is development on the edge of an urban area? Or how would you define sprawl?
I think that sprawl would be, I mean, everyone probably has their own definition of sprawl. However, I think that sprawl development is defined as occurring potentially on the outliers of the area where there isn't infrastructure in place, where there is not compatible and. where there is not compatible, compatible and contiguous development. In some cases where there may not be certified infrastructure, public transportation could be part of it as well.
In your professional opinion, does this development meet that definition?
I, based on the findings in the staff report, I, I believe that this application is contiguous to other compatible development. It is actually more consistent with the future land use designation of the area. The current residential zoning falls under the density that is recommended in the future land use designation. So this rezoning does bring the project into more conformity to what our current comprehensive plan recommends for. I believe that the applicant has done a, a very good job to address some of the concerns that had been raised through the previous application and this current application to, to enhance the site and to, to provide amenities and improvements to address some of the concerns that have been raised. I do think that this site will be designed to be compatible with the already-approved residential development that's to the west, both in connectivity through, through the roadway network as well. And, and staff would also recognize that we do have a number of other applications in this area. So it is a growing area of, of Durham, and oftentimes, we, we view these applications sort of independently because you're really focused on the one rezoning site at a time. But, but myself, I've, I've got several applications so that will be going through the, the same process as well.
Thank you. This might not be in your area, but in our upcoming transit plan, is there contemplation of bus service to this region? Or is that something we're evaluating?
Good evening, Pat Young with the Planning Department. The, in the transit plan update that's underway, we haven't got to the level of planning to be looking at routes and areas of, specific areas, but I, I will quickly try to answer that by adding to Ms. Sunyak's excellent response by saying that one of the defining characteristics of sprawl is unplanned growth, where the growth is driving unanticipated infrastructure and service costs. As Ms. Sunyak alluded to, this proposal brings the site into greater conformity with the 2005 comprehensive plan in the sense that it's a higher-density development and that the city and county have made substantial investments in a fire and EMS station in this area and in the Southeast Regional Lift Station, or SIRLs, which, again, those investments will not be capitalized upon or utilized effectively if the area isn't developed. So, I would just, I would add that. And so I think transit services would definitely be part of that mix of services. We have not planned that specifically yet. The lower density does make it more challenging, but it does not make it impossible.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protan. Other questions at this point? The manager has a clarification.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Freeman had asked a question to Ms. Sunyak about an earlier email that she sent today related to the utility capacities. And I think staff is prepared to respond to, to that question for the record, if we could.
Bo Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Operations, speaking on behalf of the Department of Water Management. So there has been an evaluation in this area. The, the SIRLs Southeast Regional Lift Station was actually planned to support development in the area and is a more efficient system for providing a regional sewer capacity than the individual developments, I think, that had previously been anticipated in the area. The development at its current density was anticipated in a planning model that was used to design the SIRLs Lift Station. And the utility extension agreement that's in the packet tonight does prohibit the issuance of any certificates of occupancy until the SIRLs Lift Station is complete. So we do believe that, that there's, we can confirm there's adequate capacity on both the sewer and the water side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Councilmember's question, I think, Mr. Reese, did you have a question?
No.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Caballero?
Yeah, I had a follow-up question because you had suggested, or you had shared, that there was other planned developments. And I think it was brought up because of other traffic improvements. So, I'm just kind of going with this thought. If we voted no today, we'd have several other similar developments. So really, I'm just thinking about some of our commissioners and their comments. Essentially, what they're asking for is a moratorium on any development in this area, based on what I'm hearing. And just thinking through, if we're putting infrastructure out there, I mean, I'm just having this question of, we put, the city's made a decision to put a fire station out there because of growth. We've also made improvements and investments in our water and sewer because of growth. And so now the development is following. And so I, I kind of think, you know, it's almost becoming a chicken and an egg. We put it out there, and so people are gonna build. And so, other than declaring a moratorium and not allowing any development, I just don't see, even if we said voted no on today's case, I just don't see a... The issue will still be there, one way or the other.
Thank you. Other comments or questions by councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of the speakers tonight. I, there may, there may be good reasons to vote against this development, but I, I want to caution folk that I, I don't think the use of the precedent metric is particularly helpful in this. A 4-3 vote's not a precedent, it's a split vote. We're a legislative body, not a judicial body. And I think Charlie Ocheck, my Latin, is very decisive. Let the decision stand doesn't really apply to us. You can go through any number of this council's votes, and you will see, I'll put, I'll put it this way, you, you will probably see some inconsistency, or at least perceive inconsistency, on a number of votes, on a number of issues. So, and I want to echo with my colleague, the spirit of my colleague, Councilor Caballero. My duly-elected colleague, Councilor Caballero, has said, if, if, if we want to set this as the case to establish precedent, then it, it would behoove us to, to, to police ourselves in a way where every other case subsequent is based upon this particular vote. I don't think that's gonna happen. So I want to be very cautious about applying the term precedent to a previous action of this council. Some of the comments of, of the planning commissioners, some of them have flipped sides during this process as well. So, if we're going to take each case on, on a case-by-case basis and look at the merits of it, I think that's a safer way to proceed than to suggest that prior to adopting a new comprehensive plan and prior to adopting a, a comprehensive strategy as a city, that we're gonna, in a de facto way, start acting as if we've adopted it if we're not prepared to do it continuously. I don't think that's gonna happen. And then the question will be, well, what's different about one developer getting a yes vote as opposed to another? Is it money? Are they larger and more wealthy? You know, we get into who wins and who loses based upon capriciousness on the part of the council. So, so if there's a reason to vote against it, then, then I want to hear about concerns from the community, a traffic impact that isn't addressed. The precedent argument is, is less compelling to me because I don't think, we're, we're legislative, we're not judicial. And you're gonna be frustrated by the way we vote in the future on something that we're not gonna be able to point to consistency on. So I'd like to just address the merits of the, of the case, of the developers' plan. The staff has recommended approving it, and I think, I'm, I'm speculating that the reason why they did it is because they, they applied development plan, or they looked at development plan and applied existing standards that we have in our comprehensive plan and our flum. And they've done a magnificent job. That doesn't mean we always just wholesale adopt what the staff says. But the fact that they have, at least from a starting point, I find compelling. And I believe that they, they are, they're conversant on what our comprehensive plan says, what our UDO says, and what our flum says. So, haven't decided yet, but I, I do want to at least establish a marker that I'm not gonna be bound by a precedent, which I really doesn't, don't think exists. I don't think we're prepared to say that we're gonna vote on every development plan henceforth based upon anticipating what our new comprehensive plan is gonna say, anticipating what any changes we may make is gonna say. That's a standard that I think we would be raising expectations that are, that are unrealistic at this point. But the merits of the development plan are plentiful to debate and to consider. And I'm, I'm anxious to hear comments from my other colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reese, and then Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As occasionally happens, much to my frustration, my colleague, Councilmember Middleton, has stolen my thunder on the precedent issue. But I just want to second what he said about that and just make sure that Commissioner Baker takes away with him, back to the planning commission, that we don't set precedent on zoning issues in this body because every zoning decision is different, fundamentally different. No piece of land is similar, is identically situated, no development is, is identically designed. No earth is similarly situated, is identically situated. And so, there will be differences that we point to. I will depart from my colleague a little bit because I pray to have the wisdom to be consistent in my decisions, though often that wisdom is lacking. So, let me just say that. But I do also want to take slight issue with my colleague, Councilmember Caballero. When she said that rejecting this particular proposal to annex a completely new piece of property into the city of Durham, failing to do that is, is akin to a moratorium on development in this area.
Pretty much.
I fundamentally disagree with that. I just couldn't disagree more with it. I think if we've heard anything from the planning commissioners who reviewed this proposal and submitted their written comments to the new proposal, it's that they want to approve something out there. They really want to. Many of them voted for the first one. And the idea that saying no to this means saying no to everything else just seems pessimistic to me. I'm hopeful that we can get something that works in this parcel because let's not forget, this is not a piece of, this, this is not part of the city of Durham right now. Okay? They want it to be. Y'all want it to be part of the city of Durham. And in order to, to do that, they're telling us lots of things they want to do. If we like that, then we should vote to bring it into the city on that basis. If we don't want that, if we don't want the next 268, 216 acres of the city of Durham to look like what they're proposing, we should vote against it. And we shouldn't worry about creating a precedent because every project and piece of property is different. We shouldn't worry about giving the sense that there's a moratorium because there's not. We should make the decision that is in the best interest of the city as each of the 7 of us see that. So that's my little soapbox about where we sit on this. With respect to the merits, I haven't heard anybody talk about that, so I'm just gonna rush boldly in and hopefully briefly in.
Please do.
I'll try to do both. I talked about a number of concerns that I had with the original structure of this project when it first came before us back on June 3rd. And there's been a little bit of work around the capacity of the water and sewer system around, in this area. Appreciate staff providing some of the information about lift stations. Also, got a little bit out of that diagram that y'all put in about the water system. I think I figured out what you were getting at there, although it's close. But my larger concern, which I expressed at the time, is somewhat consistent with what Commissioner Baker, Mr. Callaway, brought forward tonight, which was, we're talking about putting an inordinate amount of people and cars in a part of the county that is not set up to deal with it. And I appreciate the fact that there is a chicken and egg problem with transit service. If we want transit service in a particular area, we need to have the residential capacity to draw transit service into that area. But ultimately, you know, these, this is located on the state road that the city has no ability to maintain, improve, or anything. And it seems challenging to me to ask this body to plop 600 and some odd homes into this piece of property without, without a better plan than, we're talking about it in the transit plan, and maybe when we get there, there'll be enough demand, the bus line out there. I don't know, that's just me. Also, wanted to thank Mr. Callaway for bringing into the room some of the things that I at least had a hand in writing, appreciate that. Didn't know you were a fan, but good to know. And appreciate that as well. But on balance, and I'm not 100% sure what I'm gonna do, I'd like to listen to my colleagues and hear what y'all have to say. But I think the main thrust of my concern has not been addressed in fact. In the attempt, I think, to make some folks on the council happy, it has gone in the direction I, I didn't like it the first time, and that we're now talking about even more people and cars on that two-lane road. So, but anyway, that's, those are my thoughts now. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Man, Councilmember Reese, Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. I also want to make sure I address that moratorium comment and recognizing, as a former planning commissioner, I appreciate our, our commissioners coming in this evening and sharing from their own personal opinion how they feel about this development. I know the work that goes into reviewing these cases and the time you spend talking to developers and residents and people in the community, you really thoroughly address a lot of the details that I might not get to on the, on the council like I could on the planning commission. And I truly appreciate everything that you share. I will say that I, I understand completely how the planning commission could see that this was not the best benefit to the city of Durham, recognizing that this is an annexation we're talking about, it's not existing land, we're not doing infill, we're not talking about existing infrastructure that's in place, which is why I consistently keep asking about the cost-benefit analysis. I recognize that we're at a crossroads in that either we are gonna push this towards a commercial node, that we're gonna actually put the time, effort, and abilities of our staff, which is, which is in the planning department, to plan around. Because recognize, I mean, I'm just, there's so many elements of this that are so frustrating because I know that the developers put a lot of time and effort into really trying to figure out how to satisfy the, like, the real need in the city of Durham, but this is still the county. And so it's hard to, and I, we had this conversation beforehand, and I said it to you then, like, the transportation aspect of it and the load of how it all falls in this community is gonna be like that crux. I'm, I'm still not sure yet because I'm, I'm just kind of like, this is a difficult decision to make because I do know that if, it's not about the consistency of whether we have a UDO or any man-made rule, it is actually around climate change. And it, it's actually around how we build in the future. And recognizing, like I said before, 7 generations forward, to do what we know is not sustainably feasible in the community that's a two-lane road just feels wrong. And so, I'm cognizant that we could spend billions of dollars in this section of, of the community and make it as sustainable as we'd like to, but is that what we need to do right now, considering all the issues we already have in Durham? And so I know, we're, we're talking about issues of gun violence, we're talking about issues of homelessness, we're talking about issues of overcrowded schools, which I know that 61,000 goes a long way to, to address, but it doesn't address adding any new schools. And as a city-county issue, where our students are, these families that are coming in, matters. And all of these, all of these elements are factors that I put into play or that I run through in my mind to assess whether or not it's the greatest benefit for the city. I'm not, I have no desire to stop developers from developing, but I do have a desire to protect my community and recognize that we can do better. We have to do better. And so, recognizing that that, and I know I misspoke when I spoke to the city manager to say it was 30 acres, it's 216 acres. It's like 3 Briar Creeks. I'm, I'm like, this is... There's a way to go about developing in this area. And I am for certain that single-family townhomes and houses is not it. That being said, I'm, I don't want to ding the developer that comes forward first or that comes, presents the plan that actually could fit in the space that aligns with the future, the future land use maps. But I do want to be cognizant, I keep going back and forth, but I do, I do want to be cognizant that this is not... cognizant that this is not something we're going to solve tonight, and I really would like to ask for more time because I would like more time to look at how much it's really going to cost us, seriously. I'm not, I'm not trying to, like, delay it just to delay. It is really a concern of whether or not this is something that's going to benefit the city as a whole. So yes, bringing in 216 acres of land from the county to the city, putting it on, putting water and sewer in, that's phenomenal, but it will cost. And what are we giving up? And I've had the conversation about the water loads and how much development. I know that residential is our highest water use. I'm like, where are we, where are we going with this? How many developments can we do in this area? What does it look like? And I can't see it right now. I just, I'm not sure. Just honest.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for the developers, if that's all right. Could you talk a little bit about walkability, trails, amenities, and those issues in your, in your project?
Sure. We've done a lot of work to try to preserve the piece of property to be usable for the people that are there. It's, it's got meandering streams that go through it, as you could see on the, on the slide. So it's got all these fingers, and what we've done, we've kind of created individual communities inside of those. So there's little, they're blocks, they're not a lot of long stream, long roads with cul-de-sacs. And the typical kind of thing, you kind of come in, you'll be meandering through around all these streams, and there'll be like little individual neighborhoods. We're, we've connected those with an interconnection of trails that are off-road trails. Of course, there's sidewalk on both sides of the street and all the streets, but in addition to that, there's all kinds of, I guess, nature trails is the way to say it, that will go along the streams and the buffers, and those will be at least two and a half miles. Some of our plans have them up to three miles, but we're going to put those in, putting in a large amenities, swimming pool, and the park system that you see in neighborhoods of this size, it'll have that as well. Now, the closest grocery store is not walkable to this piece of property right now. It's, but it's not far. It's four, five-minute drive up the road.
Thank you. Could you also talk a little bit about your building practices as regards sustainability?
So I, we're, we're what's known as a production builder. We build very efficiently-designed homes. They are highly engineered down to try to shave out every nickel out of the project and every little piece of material. You might know we were recently purchased by Berkshire Hathaway. One of Warren Buffett's big reasons for acquiring builders was to try to push us into a more factory-oriented production system. One of our sister companies is a manufactured home. So a lot of what we do is build off-site in the factories and brought in the walls, systems like that. And they're, they're very efficient. We build very efficient homes, very well insulated, very little material waste in, in what we do.
Thank you. So we talked a lot about density when I talked to you about this project and about when I voted against the original, wanting to see more homes and smaller homes on the site. I feel like we're, I'm probably one of those people that Charlie was referring to about some of my comments making it less exciting for him. And I, and I feel like we're kind of in this balance of, you know, wanting, wanting to have denser development for both environmental and affordability and growth reasons, but also that you're building in a watershed, that you have a number of streams, so the topography is difficult. Could you have gotten any more units on this piece of property than you did?
I, I don't believe that we could have. We're limited to the 616 that we've got. We hit our, that was the maximum amount for the studies that we had. But even if we were to go beyond that, it's very mountainous piece of property. If you go walk it, it's, it's got a lot of topo. Mountainous may not be the word, but there's a lot of streams that go through, there's a lot of topo on the property. I guarantee you, if you walk for 10 minutes, you'll be out of breath. You're not running an 18-minute 5K across this piece of property.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, twenty-two.
Don't shortchange them, buddy.
So that kind of topo, the reason I brought that up, makes grading of high-density stuff very difficult. When, when you're trying to take something that's shaped all your regular and just flatten it out, you have to go in and clear-cut, clear-grade everything, make it level, and there's really no opportunities for preserving trees, buff streams, natural areas. To do that, when you, when you try to pack large structures together or long strings of townhomes together, it, it needs to be made flat to do that. There's no yard there to kind of absorb some of that topographic change. So the answer is no. I don't believe we could have gotten more on this property.
Thank you. Yeah, I, making these decisions is always this complicated balance between the fact that Durham is growing and we need more housing, that density is environmentally beneficial, that we are trying to protect our environmental assets as well as our infrastructure, that we know that we need additional transit. I think that the proposal that's coming before us today is significantly improved from the proposal that we heard several months ago for a number, in a number of ways. Additional townhomes, especially at the price point of the low 200, is something that I believe Durham needs, where that housing, that price point is affordable to folks at 80% of AMI, which is about as low as we're going to get without a nonprofit or government subsidy. So building that kind of, having private developers build that kind of housing, I believe is important for, for meeting our needs and for, meeting our needs specifically for housing that's affordable to lower-income families in our community. I believe this probably, this does a, it makes, makes a good balance between density and environmental protections. If the maximum impermeable service is 24%, and you're at 24%, you can't really ask for more of that. I appreciate the trails. I think that significantly improves walkability, even though the style of the project is more kind of suburban and windy with longer, like windy blocks and longer blocks rather than kind of straight square blocks that you might see in a more urban area. And I think that it's, I, personally, I have said I don't care if we ever build another, you know, $400,000 single-family home in Durham. Doesn't bother me if we never build another one of those. It does bother me if we don't provide housing at this price point and more dense housing and missing middle housing like townhomes. So yes, I think, you know, to respond to some of the opponents, yes, I think 65% single-family housing is, is plenty of single-family housing, but I think that it's not, we still don't have enough housing overall, and having this kind of product, this townhome product that's affordable to more people, is beneficial to the city of Durham overall. And just a quick comment on the traffic issue. From the study, it seemed the roads were under capacity, even though they are smaller, narrower. I think as we see more development in the area, we'll have to think about more traffic improvements. The developer here is doing a number of traffic improvements, but we're only eight miles from the city center. We're not, we're not going too far out into the hinterlands, and I don't, from, from the studies, the information that we received, the traffic generated by this development is not going to even get those roads close to what their capacity is, even at their, at their current levels with the improvements that developers are making. Yeah, I, I think that we often consider zoning recent proposals in the context of build nothing or build this, but we're actually looking at build a very small number of homes that would be on wells and septic and would be much bigger and much less affordable, or build this. And I think this is much preferable to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to say something on the transit question as well.
Not unless somebody asks you that question. Madam Mayor Protem, would you like to ask him any questions about the transit?
I would love to. Could you expand a little bit on your, on your thoughts about transit for the site?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. The point that I wanted to make is that currently Olive Branch Road, the only houses along there are single-family houses on multi-acre lots. There's no way, as it's currently structured, that anybody is going to want to run a bus line down there. The addition of 616 additional homes is what's going to add the density that eventually makes it make sense to run a transit line. The developer has committed to set aside space for a bus stop in the future when the land, when a line is planned. We would be very happy to have a line run down Olive Branch Road, but it's not going to happen until the houses get there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Freeman?
Just had a question for our resident planning commissioner, and I just wanted to ask for some feedback around some of the comments that you've heard and just get your sense on much of this urban sprawl.
Did you hear a question?
No, I did not.
Councilmember Freeman asked if you could. Councilmember, do you want to go ahead and restate it?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to ask your, I mean, you're hearing most of this conversation, and I'm assuming you're having some deliberate thoughts about the comments that you made. Just wanted to give you a moment to say whatever it is that you are thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, a lot of things, so I appreciate that. You know, I think that a lot of the things that have been said tonight are absolutely right, and I definitely understand the comments about precedence and not using precedence. And so that was appreciated. I think that we need to reimagine what Durham can and should be, and I don't think that it can and should, I don't think that it should be single-family-only developments. And I, it's, it's easy to focus on sort of the location of where this property is and thinking about sprawl as kind of into the hinterlands and on the edge of the city, but we need to remember that Northgate neighborhood was once in the hinterlands and on the edge of the city, et cetera. There were many developments that were once on the edge of the city and are now integrated and part of the city. And if you, if you have, if you lift up whatever is on your table right now and look at the table, look at the table that you're sitting at, and look at the urban fabric that lies just south of I-85 and north of 147, you see a very compact development type, compact streets, highly integrated, very short block lengths. And if you look further south at the map that's on your table, you'll see very disconnected types of development. And that is what we build. That is the DNA that builds Durham. So it's not just, we talk a lot about use, we talk a lot about density. We need to talk more about form and about what Durham is so that people can just get places. They can get from point A to point B. And I know that it's hard to imagine because frankly, we're one of the worst sprawling places in the country. We're surrounded by sprawl, and it's hard to sort of ensure that there would be anything else but that. But we can, we can be different, and many communities are being different, and the way that they're doing it is by changing the DNA, the way that they grow, and they're doing that by coding it into their regulations. And it also makes, that makes it much easier for developers because they just want to be, they just want to get their project, they want to get their project through quickly and efficiently. And we can have two winners when we have the right standards in place, when we have the right regulations in place so that we are creating a sustainable and integrated and inclusive and equitable and greenhouse gas-efficient city. We can code that into the regulations and create a much more efficient and effective process and predictable process for the developer, for you, for the Planning Commission, for the citizens, for residents and neighbors, and that's something that we need to do. We certainly don't need to stop building. We need to, we need to continue to build. That is absolutely critical and absolutely important. But this development is going to be here forever. So we can, we can build something wrong, but if there's connectivity, we can fix it over time. We can always change land use, but once streets are on the ground, it is very difficult to change that because those are, those are legal, those are dedicated. So just, just as an example, a good block length, a good block length is somewhere between 300 and 600 feet. You can go up 700 or 800 feet and have that be a good walkable block length. And so if you go to some of the neighborhoods, the pre-World War II neighborhoods, those are the block lengths that you will find. The types of block lengths that you find in this part of the city, in this area, we're talking about not 300 or 400 or 500 foot-long block lengths, we're, we're talking about 3,000 or 4,000 foot-long block lengths. This is never going to be walkable. It's never going to be, there's never going to be an opportunity to fix this once it is put in place. It will be too difficult. And if we continue to build this way, if we continue to do what we're doing, it will, it will be virtually impossible to reach sort of a greenhouse gas-neutral city. So if we imagine a scenario where the Green New Deal passes, we can't just flip a switch and somehow reach greenhouse gas neutrality. We have to change the way that we live and the way that we grow, and that doesn't mean social engineering or anything like that. In fact, what we're doing now is social engineering by forcing people to live with cars. And the last thing that I want to say, because I've gone off way too long right now, is that we oftentimes think of a sort of housing affordability, but what planners and what, the direction that planning is going, the planning profession is going, is thinking more about housing and transportation. So, and I mentioned this in the, in the Planning Commission meeting, when we, when city planners look at a map of any city, any American city, where we have that dense mix of uses in the core and walkability and accessibility, and then the much more auto-oriented development on the outskirts of the city, when we look at a map like that and we look at housing prices, and we look at the percentage of families that are housing cost burden, so they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. Those people live closer to the city center because houses are more expensive. But then when we look at how much, how many people are spending more than 45% on housing and transportation and the map flips, people are spending more than 45% of their income on housing plus transportation in areas outside of those dense mixed-use areas. And so I think that that is a very important consideration, and also considering who gets to live where, who can afford to live where. We often think about housing, but we don't think enough about neighborhoods, not just housing affordability, but neighborhood affordability, not just the provision of housing, but the provision of neighborhoods and making sure that we have enough housing, but also enough neighborhoods. So I hope that that gets, gets at some of the, helps you think this through and gets at some of the thoughts that you had. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Would add to that, that it's not just housing and transportation that planning will have to look at, it's also economic development and recognizing that there has to be engines in the community that actually help facilitate jobs and access that's not just where you live. Lot of bedroom communities and not enough mixed use, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the Mayor Protem, who actually helped me with the clarifying questions around transportation and the ability to handle the load of commuters on the road. I also want to say, I totally got what Councilor Caballero was actually saying. I, I didn't get the sense that, and she obviously can speak for herself, but my sense was that she was responding to the notion that was in the air of precedent. And if that, in fact, took place, then it would be a de facto moratorium if we took the precedent seriously. So I, that was my sense of her. I didn't get the sense that she was actually advocating or suggesting that we were imposing moratorium. My sense was that, as I sensed as well... My sense was that, as I sensed as well, that if that precedent germ took place or took hold, and we tried to adhere to that, then by definition, if we adhere to it, it would be a de facto moratorium. So I just wanted to put that out there. We have tiers for a reason. And living in the suburbs is different than living in the urban core. And a lot of people head out to the suburban tier because they can't afford to live in the urban core, as was already intoned. And if there is an attempt, and I'm not suggesting that this is a foot, but if there is an effort to urbanize the suburban tier, then I hope we don't bring the baggage of pricing folk out of the suburban tier like we do in the urban tier. You know, and I resonate so deeply with what the commissioner said about accessibility and leaving your cars at home. Google Middleton and Light Rail. So I understand the importance of it. But as a legislator, as a policymaker, I have a decision to make tonight that's before me. I'm not interested in making this developer the test case or the poster child for our aspirations. And part of the reason why I'm feeling more comfortable not doing that is precisely because of some of the questions that the Mayor Protem asked around, the actual impact transportation-wise and car-wise. Again, I'll just say, and this will hopefully be my final comment on this, the staff's recommendation to approve, I believe, was predicated upon a reading of our comprehensive plan as it stands now. And I do not want to... This developer, I appreciate the proffers that you've made in terms of DPS and relative to our Affordable Housing Fund. Absent some really kind of dramatic impact that would be had on the quality of life of folk that are already out there, I went to the opening of Station 17, was there when they cut the ribbon. So I'm aware of our increased capacity out there. And someone earlier mentioned, you know, the reason we've got it out there is because we're anticipating a development. I don't see the suburban tier looking like the urban core anytime soon. And in some ways, I hope it doesn't in terms of pricing folk out. I appreciate the price points of the homes. More people are moving to Durham. If we could hold that number static, then the 65% single-family housing number would be contextualized a little different for me. But there are more people moving here, and many of them simply can't live in the urban core. And I think it's instructive to remember that the expanded housing choices is for the urban tier. So I put that to you. So I'm inclined more now to vote approval based on everything I've said, based upon the Mayor Protem's comments, questions, rather, clarifying impact in terms of traffic, but I'm still listening. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I think many of the concerns that were raised by the planning commission and that we've discussed tonight are completely appropriate. I think they're relevant, and I think we should be having them for all of these cases. And I most certainly think that they should be a part of our planning for our new comprehensive plan. I'm going to vote for this project for many of the reasons outlined by the Mayor Protem, and I just look forward to continuing to have this conversation. I think, you know, these considerations around transportation and density and the provision of public utilities and climate change are very urgent and should be foundations of our future land use planning. And so I just want to say that and say that I intend to vote for this project. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, we have had another person sign up to speak on this item. Debra Williams. Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams, are you a proponent or opponent?
I think I'm a proponent.
Okay. Will you speak briefly on this?
I will. I just have a question for the council because I was here the last time that the developers came forward, and there were questions about DPS. And I did try to find it, and I heard Councilmember Freeman mention a little bit. But I want to understand better what is the offering for DPS.
We'll ask the developer to answer that.
Okay. And then the second portion is, I live at 3319 Red Gate Drive, which is between Highway 70 and 98. Right now, it feels a little stressed when we talk about the traffic that would lead to Olive Branch. And I just want to understand, and right now, it feels like there is a food desert in that area to me. Although I have the ability to go where I need to go, I just want to understand, I know this is kind of in-between the county and city. So I want to understand how we're going to support, number one, traffic through that zone of 90, Highway 98, and also how we're going to support what's already there and that is lacking.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Especially for DPS.
All right. I'll ask the developer to please respond concerning your proffer regarding Durham Public Schools or developer's representative.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. The proffer for public schools is $100 per unit. Since we are anticipating 616 houses, it comes to $61,600. In regards to the question about food access, we looked at this when it was before the planning commission. The nearest grocery store to the development is about a mile away on 98. It's Food Lion. If you go the other direction, going south towards Briar Creek, it's about three and a half miles to Briar Creek. And of course, there's several grocery stores down there.
Thank you. And I'll ask staff to respond to Ms. Williams' comments on transportation. I believe that she talked about the road connecting 98 and 70. And Mr. Judge, welcome. If you could perhaps comment on that aspect of this development.
Yes. Bill Judge, Transportation. As you heard previous, there was a traffic impact analysis, and the developer is making all of the required roadway improvements to provide acceptable levels of service at the off-site intersections. So beyond that, the only other roadway improvements are essentially a three-laning of Olive Branch Road adjacent to the site to provide left-turn lanes into and out. Additionally, they are providing the Collector Street that would connect with adjacent development to the west to provide a Collector Street between Olive Branch and Doc Nichols Road.
Do you want to comment also on the general... On the changes in level of service that this development will or will not cause?
So, yeah. Primarily, yeah, the existing traffic out there is very low. That's why there is a lot of capacity, but there is a lot of development pressure in the area. So when we looked at the cumulative impacts, there were a few of the larger off-site intersections that did require either signalization or turn lanes.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions, Ms. Williams. All right. Other colleagues? Any other colleagues?
So I originally voted no when this came before us, and my inclination right now is to vote yes, and partly because I think that the developer has worked very diligently. I know that there were several comments within our planning commissioners asking specifically around trails and open space. And you had the conversations with key nonprofits and made those commitments. I also think, and this is what I meant by moratorium, I meant that the other types of development that are going to be designed for this area or people are going to be putting are similar to this. While I very much appreciate Commissioner Baker's sentiments and actually agree with him, a moratorium to me means that we'd have to literally put development on pause to get the things he's talking about, to get transit out there, to get the streets in the way that he is indicating. We don't... Most of the main streets out there are state-controlled. So there's vast limitations. And my concern is if we... I think that the developer has worked so diligently with staff and with planning commission and with others around their concerns, and I think it sends a very high expectation on what we expect from the folks who are coming down the pipeline. And so my fear is if we say no to this, then developers will see that as a, well, we will do what we can by right. And what we will get is not any better for the environment. And we will miss a good opportunity showing the development community the expectations and the tone that we want in Durham. And so that is why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another person who signed up to comment, Mr. Matt Kopack. Mr. Kopack, welcome. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Would you like to speak, sir? You do. Thank you. Mr. Kopack, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Would you like it if you take less?
Yes, I will take less. I rise actually without full information or background on this particular issue, but I understand that y'all are grappling with some difficult questions where there are tensions that exist between our needs, you know, for housing, for connectivity, for transit, and the impacts that can have also on the environment, which is so important, you know, to our quality of life and health. And I rise on behalf of the Durham Environmental Affairs Board, City-and-County Board, which I chair, and just want to offer the Environmental Affairs Board, you know, which are here to work with you and advise the city council staff and planning commission as well, and offer to be a partner when you wrestle with these sorts of questions in the past. I don't think we are set up currently. We don't have the connectivity to pull that group, which has expertise, to offer in these difficult decisions that we're wrestling with. And since that's what we're here to do, I just want to offer us up and would love to find out, you know, from the right staff, points of contact, how it is that we can appropriately loop in the Environmental Affairs Board in some of these sorts of questions that our city and county are wrestling with. So that's all that I wish to offer this evening. I'd love if we could find a way to make that happen. I can reach out to Mr. Hayes and others, or Mr. Young, and see if there's a way to do that.
Thank you. I think one of the main ways will be involvement in the comp plan rewrite, which also includes our transit plan rewrite.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it will be critically important for the EAB members to be involved in those discussions.
Yeah, and so we intend to be engaged in those comp plan discussions as these come up more one-off, more periodic. I think it'd be great to figure out how we can make those connections as well so we can be a thought partner and supporter.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think talking to Mr. Young about that's a great idea. All right, we have another speaker signed up on this item. Mr. Harold Rassenen. Did I get your name right?
Yes, sir.
Are you a proponent or an opponent?
I'm mixed on that, but I've lived in this neighborhood for 20 years or almost 20 years, so I'd defer my perspective on what's going on. The Food Lion is two miles, to keep you accurate. The Briar Creek is five miles. I know they underestimated those. Some questions I have is if the city annexed this piece of land, what about the surrounding residents that are in-between? Will they be annexed? Will the whole community become rezoned? Or will the existing housing be restricted to the existing zoning?
Let me ask Ms. Sonjak if she could answer that first question, and then we'll take your other questions. Ms. Sonjak?
So if this application is approved, the annexation area would only be effective for the portion that has been included as part of the application. You would not, if you were a surrounding property, it would not automatically then assume that you would be annexed into the city. Same thing with the zoning. The zoning would... Zoning change would only affect those properties that had been included as part of this application.
Right. But the concern I have is there's this project. There's one directly behind me that's going to be proposed soon. There's several on Doc Nichols Road. So you can see that the whole area is becoming city. I feel for the deer herd, let's put it that way, and the barn owls that live out there. And one other question. Oh, as far as the traffic is concerned, a lot of people use that area as a shortcut going from Wake Forest down into the park to avoid traffic on 98 and to basically shave off a few miles going into RSTP. So if you go there and sit at that corner of Doc Nichols Road and Olive Branch Road at 4:00 in the afternoon till about 6:00 in the afternoon, you'll see that it's queued up halfway up Doc Nichols Road. And in the morning, because it's a right turn, there's a lot of people that just fly by through there. But that should be considered in the traffic. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Rassenen. You're absolutely right that our city is urbanizing. And this is... We have so many people that are moving here, and they are demanding housing. There is a huge demand for it, and housing is being built all over county. And you're absolutely right that this is... There is a cost to nature. All right. Councilmembers, any other comments? Any other comments? All righty, if not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is now void of counsel. If anyone wishes to make a motion at this time, the motion that we would need would be... First motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the ordinance annexing 1,001 Olive Branch Road into the city of Durham.
Thank you. That's the motion that we would need. That's a motion by Councilmember Austin.
Second.
Second by the Mayor Protem. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote? Please close the vote.
And the motion passes four to zero with Councilmember...
Four to three.
I'm sorry, four to three, with Councilmember Freeman and Reese, and Mayor Shul voting no.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the motion to adopt a consistency statement.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
And the motion passes five to two with Councilmember Freeman and Councilmember Reese voting no.
Thank you. And now for motion three to adopt an ordinance amending the Durham UDO.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote. I'm sorry, did I say close the vote? I apologize. Madam Clerk, please close the vote.
And the motion passes six to one with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who's been here tonight. Thank you to the developer. Thank you to the people who have spoken on this issue. I think we are having a very important discussion in Durham. This discussion will mainly be joined in our comp plan rewrite, but it also playing out in other ways as we discuss these individual developments. I will appreciate again all of you all for being here tonight and for what you've had to offer. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to item 15, zoning map change for 1612 Carpenter Fletcher Road. And we'll first hear the report from staff. Hello, Ms. Struthers.
Good evening. I'm Emily Struthers with the Planning Department. I will now present KC 1900017 for 1612 Carpenter Fletcher Road. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Daniel Jewell with Coulter Jewell Tims, PA, for two parcels located at 1612 and 1562 Carpenter Fletcher Road. The site is presently zoned Office Institutional, OI. The applicant proposes to change this designation to Commercial General with a text-only development plan, CGD. Text-only development plans are a relatively new type of development plan that allows proffered text commitments that specify, limit, and/or prohibit uses within the zoning district requested pursuant to UDO Section 531, the use table. No graphic plan is provided with a text-only development plan. This rezoning request includes a text commitment. The uses will be limited to UDO Section 525F Retail Sales and Services and further limited to Health Club or Studio. The site is currently designated as Commercial on the future land use map, which is consistent with the proposed zoning change. Durham Planning Commission, at their October 15, 2019, meeting, recommended approval of the proposed Commercial General with a text-only development plan, CGD, the zoning district by a vote of 12 to 1. with a text-only development plan, CGD, the zoning district by a vote of 12 to 1. Staff determines that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Two motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt a consistency statement, and the second is for the zoning ordinance. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Struthers. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. And first, I'm going to ask, are there any questions for staff by members of the council? Hearing none, we do have one speaker to this item, and that's Mr. Dan Jewell. Mr. Jewell, welcome. Mr. Jewell, I give you three minutes, and if it turns out you need more, that could happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am Dan Jewell. Culture Jewell Thames at 111 West Main Street. Here this evening at the request of our client, Mr. Steve Escheverry. Just to tell you a little bit about the request. Steve operates this great fitness outfit called Aricayan Hot Yoga, currently located in the shopping center at Fayetteville and 54. But Steve has dreamed for a long time of owning his own space, where he has room to expand and be closer to where his customers live and work, to be able to keep up with the ever-evolving trends in fitness training, which I haven't been aware of, but learning a lot. Steve found this location, a former daycare center that has been closed for several years, and it seems ideal for what he wants to do. We first tried to convince the planning department that the use might be perhaps considered closer to a dance studio than anything else, which actually would have permitted him to move in without a rezoning. That didn't work, though, possibly because the staff looked at the same video I did that showed that what folks do in this fitness training is not exactly the same as learning the sambar or the foxtrot. So that's why we're here tonight, to request the rezoning to general commercial with a very, very specific use limitation, that being a health club or studio. And as Emily explained, the future land use map already designates this property as commercial. So at a minimum, this request brings the zoning into conformance with the flume. And the surrounding area is already generally commercial in character with a self-storage facility right across Carpenter Fletcher Road, commercial uses to the east and south, and an active railroad abutting on the western property line. The site's less than an acre. And once we incorporate all the ordinance-required setbacks, landscape buffers, tree coverage areas, stormwater management, or parking, we have just enough land to maybe build about 7,000 square feet of building. And Steve said that works perfect for him. So given our specific self-imposed use limitation, the limited additional development opportunity on the property, and the character of the surrounding area, we hope you can find that this is an appropriate request and find in favor of that request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? If not, are there any questions or comments by members of the council? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. I just have a quick question for staff. Thank you. So I was a little confused about why this wouldn't be allowed in OI. Could you just say a little bit about that?
Sure. The use is a little difficult to pinpoint specifically in our ordinance breakdown of uses. So there was some back and forth as to whether it'd be considered more like a gymnasium or more like a health club. And so after back and forth, the determination identified the use as outlined there, which would be specified in commercial, given that health club overlap.
Okay, so closer to a health club than a dance studio, but a dance studio is allowed in...
Yes. The initial request was more towards the language of gymnasium, and we were concerned that that would potentially produce, should the proposed owner not follow through, could produce even higher traffic impacts from a more of a gymnasium standpoint. So through the rezoning process, we tweaked the language there a little bit more to be more specific to their specific use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Struthers. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is now before the council. We would need a motion to adopt a consistency statement. So moved.
Second.
We moved, and seconded we adopt the consistency statement. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
And we need a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Durham Unified Development Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded we adopt an ordinance amending the UDO. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jewell, and thank you. Good luck to you and your new business venture, sir. Now we'll move to item 16, the plant amendment for Forest Hills. And we will hear the report from staff.
Sorry, being, I'm Carla Rosenberg with the Planning Department. This is case A 180004, Forest Hills. Requests for a future land use map amendment and development tier change were received from Timothy Profeta, represented by Bill Bryan of Morningstar Law Group, for 450 parcels of land totaling nearly 200 acres. The properties are located within the Forest Hills neighborhood, which is bounded by Kent Street and Shoreham Street to the west, Stewart Drive, Summit Street, and South Roxburgh Street to the south, American Tobacco Trail to the east, and East Forest Hills Plaza, Wells Street, and Vivon Street to the north. The original application submitted in April 2018 contained parcels pertaining to the Pine Crest development. These parcels were removed from the application in a subsequent revised version in August 2019. So the applicant is proposing to change the future land use of 177 acres of land from medium-density residential to categories of lower density based upon the existing zoning designations. If zoned RS10 or RS20, the applicant proposes changing to low-density residential. If zoned RS8, RSM, RU5, or RU52, the applicant proposes low-medium-density residential. Approximately 20 acres of land designated as recreation and open space will maintain the current designation. In addition, the applicant proposes to change the development tier for the entire 197 acres from urban to suburban. The Durham Planning Commission, at their September 15, 2019, meeting, recommended denial by an even vote of six to six. Staff determines that the requests are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Two motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt a consistency statement as required by the North Carolina General Statute, 160A 383. And the second is to adopt a resolution amending the future land use map such that all parcels currently zoned RS10 and RS20 shall be designated as low-density residential, and all parcels currently zoned RS8, RSM, RU5, and RU52 shall be designated as low-medium-density residential. And that the development tier of the stated parcels, along with the adjacent recreation and open space, be amended from urban to suburban as shown in attachment three. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. You have now heard the report from staff, and I'm going to declare this public hearing open. We have speakers for this item. I do want to mention that someone at the address 706 East Forest Hills Boulevard, if that's you, you didn't put your name on the card. So if you were here and you live at 706 East, Ms. Plas, gotcha. Okay. Ma'am? No problem. I figured we could figure it out if we just asked. Okay, I'm going to do this a little differently because we have nine speakers who are proponents and two speakers, I believe, only two speakers, who are opponents. And I'm going to give everyone three minutes. And I'm going to begin, I'm sorry, I should have first asked colleagues. I apologize. Are there questions that my colleagues have for staff at this point before we hear the speakers? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, thanks. Could you explain a little bit about our procedure for this kind of resident-initiated comp plan and zoning amendment proposal?
A procedure, you mean differing from...
Like, how does this happen? What's our policy for an individual bringing this sort of request to the council?
I mean, we review it as any other request that would come in. It's a plan amendment. It's a private citizen. Whether there's any other group behind it, it's reviewed as any other request would be.
I guess why I'm confused is we mostly get these sort of requests from people who own the property, whereas this is a request from a single individual for a large piece of property.
My understanding is that the applicant lives in the area, in that vicinity.
Right. Okay. But they're asking to change the entire neighborhood, which is, of course, not entirely owned by them. I think it's not, it's very different from what we usually see. And so I'm just wondering how this comes about.
Right, so good evening again. Pat Young with Planning Department. So the action before you is only to change the future land use map designation, not the zoning. And that can be done without the affirmative consent of all the parties. So there were a number of signatories in the area in support of this, as is included in your attachments. But it's not required that the affirmative consent of all the property owners be provided. So that is unusual, but it's legal and it is precedent.
Is that, would that be the case even if the applicant didn't live in the area? Like, could anyone apply for a flum change for anywhere in Durham?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Freeman.
All right, one more question, Pat. I was trying to prevent you from walking back and forth. But you're getting extra steps.
There you go.
I like that. You got in your extra steps.
Thank you.
Did you catch that?
I need it.
I'm just trying to make sure, I'm trying to make sure I understand. Is this, is this proposed flum amendment trying to undo the comp plan changes? Is that the gist of it from 2005?
I would have to do some research on what the planned designation was prior to 2005, but it is requesting to take it to a lower proposed future density than the 2005 comprehensive plan called for.
Okay. Because I think, well, I'm just noting, and I think it's on, I can't tell what page number, but in the report, in the summary around site history, it's showing the tier designation was changed from medium-density or changed from low-density into medium or converted to medium-density in that same area. I just wanted to know if it was the same.
Well, 2005 was the first time that the tier system was put in place through the comprehensive plan. The proposal before you tonight substantially, I wouldn't say completely, is proposing to bring the future land use designation into consistency with what exists today. In terms of land uses and density of land uses.
Thank you.
Maybe some minor accommodation for additional density, but very little.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we hear our speakers? All right, I'm going to first hear from the proponents, and I'm going to ask, as I call your name, if you could line up over here to my right. First, we'll hear from Matt McDowell. Second, Camille Blummer. Third, Kristy Ferguson. And fourth, Tim Profeta. If you all could make your way over here to my right and speak in that order, that would be great. Mr. McDowell, are you here? Great, thank you. Please come up. Give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name's Matt McDowell. Address is 1540 Hermitage Court. And of course, I'm here to ask you all to vote in favor of this petition tonight. You know, the core of the issue really is whether Forest Hills should be designated as part of the urban or the suburban tier. And I thought it was illuminating to read the definitions in the current comprehensive plan of the various tiers. I was interested particularly that the definition of the urban tier is, and I'll quote here, "land primarily developed before the 1960s with small lot sizes in traditional grid patterns and differing uses in proximity to one another." And yeah, that definition's very useful. I've lived in urban neighborhoods. I love them. I get why other people do. But I guess what's confusing to me as an ordinary person is that's just not Forest Hills. You know, for several reasons. The topography of Forest Hills, not to be Captain Obvious, but it is really hilly. And there are winding streets. The park on both sides of university really render the neighborhood more suburban. And, you know, accordingly, Forest Hills zoning designations, it's mostly RS10, RS20, they align with that suburban feel. And so granting this request, in my mind anyway, really irons out the discrepancy that we have between zoning designations in the UDO and the flum tiers. And I think it's important, too. I was able to take the Planning Academy's course earlier this year. And, you know, when we were talking about the future land use map and petitions to change it, it was really clear to me that, you know, I just always, or just about always, petitions to change the future land use map are brought forth by developers in the course of proceedings. And I think it's important to remember that this proceeding was brought forward by a group of, you know, ordinary people who have had to really dig in and learn the UDO and learn how these processes have worked. You know, we see there's been a great deal of development in Durham, and clearly tonight's hearing is, you know, evidence there's going to be a great deal more. And that's appropriate, given, you know, the fact that so many more people are coming here, as the mayor has said. But I hope you all will consider this as sort of a modest way to, A, iron out a discrepancy in our current laws, and, you know, to acknowledge that, you know, it's important to, you know, hear the concerns of ordinary, some use the term citizen planners. I'm not sure I've earned that term yet, but just ordinary people who bring forward ways to improve things. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell. We'll now hear from Camille Blummer, and I hope I've said your name right. Thank you. And please give us your name and address. You also have three minutes.
I'm Camille Blummer, 52 Beverly Drive, Durham, North Carolina, 27707. Mr. Mayor, city council members, where do you stay? For those of you who grew up in Durham, I'm pretty sure you have either been asked that question or have asked it yourself. The significance is the answer meant something. By responding North Gate Park, Walthound, East Durham, you immediately knew the community a person belonged to. It was a neighborhood, not a development. I believe all of our Durham neighborhoods are significant, and we have an obligation to be good stewards of these communities. I also support growth and change, and yes, we can do both. We do not have to destroy the character of our neighborhoods to do both. We just have to be thoughtful and deliberate. To that end, I support, and I'm asking you to support, this amendment. This will allow our neighborhood to grow and increase density without the risk of losing the forests in Forest Hills. By the way, a couple weeks ago, I attended my 40th high school reunion. Durham High School, class of 1979, Go Bulldogs. I mentioned to someone that I had moved back to Durham about 12 years ago, and he asked me, "Where do you stay?" It's good to be home. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blummer. We'll now hear from Kristy Ferguson. Dr. Ferguson, welcome. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
It's Dr. Kristy Ferguson, 1011 Homer Street. Good evening. I'm here to request that you vote for this amendment. The current flum or flume is at odds with what's on the ground in the neighborhood. Taken to its logical conclusion, it means we want Forest Hills to disappear. And I don't think that that's what anybody wants. Contrary to the stereotypes of Forest Hills, it's economically diverse. There are very large houses, but there are also small houses. There are some under 1,000 square feet. The current policy encourages builders to roll up several small homes, knock them down, and build something expensive in their place. As part of the new comp plan, Durham could design something more nuanced and flexible, more nuanced than bubbles of increasing density drawn in somewhat arbitrary locations. We could have a plan that would allow our neighborhoods to evolve instead of endangering them. Forest Hills still has undeveloped land that could incorporate more diverse housing types. For example, there are two large adjacent parcels with owners who've signaled their intent to sell in the next couple of years. We could plan something in those and other locations that would meet the goals of the city. Maybe quadruplexes, maybe apartment buildings would be right in those locations. We risk losing the opportunity to be intentional by continuing to ignore... We risk losing the opportunity to be intentional by continuing to ignore both the reality of what's in place and the actual real opportunities that we have. If you think that as a matter of policy, Durham's historic assets are worth preserving, not for me, not for the current residents, but because they're important to the city, then I ask you vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ferguson. Mr. Profeta, and as Mr. Profeta's coming up, if I could ask the next three speakers to please come over here to my right, that would be Merle Ritchie, Tom Clayton, and Ellen Pless. Welcome, Mr. Profeta. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and the council. And my name is Tim Profeta. I reside at 1014 West Forest Hills Boulevard in Durham. I'm also a signatory, as you noted, on the petition. I just wanted to speak to that briefly. When I signed as the party on this petition, I was signed on behalf of a large coalition. My neighbors had organized themselves. The staff talked about the signatures on the petition. So I don't know procedurally if I should have joined myself with 40 others, but I offered myself as a signatory but didn't intend to be a single moving party. I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the amendment to amend the flum in Forest Hills. And I want to make three quick points. I want to first say that, as we all know, Forest Hills is a distinct, diverse neighborhood that serves as a beautiful resource for all of Durham. Just come to our park in the weekends and look at the pickup soccer in the park, look at the people down at the water park, come to our neighborhood in Halloween and see how we're a streets team with everybody. It's a, there's a character in the neighborhood that I think we all value and enjoy. Second point I want to make is that there's a fundamental disconnect between the flum and the neighborhood, the neighborhood plan and the neighborhood zoning right now, which is completely unknown to most of my neighbors and residents until recent years. It seems they've been creating this 2005 planning process that did not really inquire into the neighborhood's character and desires, but simply created a plan that was more based on the proximity of the town center. And it had no inquiry after where our hydrologies, like our transportation capabilities, right, and our historic development is. And most of us who moved to that neighborhood, I moved in 2009, didn't know it existed. We just knew the neighborhood or the character it was. Third point I want to make is our neighborhood wants to be part of helping Durham evolve, not stay static. My neighbors and I are not resisting any change at all. We'd want to be part of creating a plan for change that does not lose what makes Forest Hills special. We are awakening to the city's needs. We want to work with the city to create a new comprehensive plan that allows for growth, embraces our diversity, and makes Durham thrive with Forest Hills remaining as part of its historic center. The council knows we are all engaging in that planning process. Our neighborhood is engaging in that planning process and hoping to bring our neighborhood together to support the city's needs. What we're asking for today, and we're hoping to do, is work forward with you, work with you in partnership to create a new comprehensive plan that allows Durham to grow while also preserving things like Forest Hills that make it special. If you grant this amendment today, that'd be a great first step in that partnership by protecting the neighborhood until we can create the process to ensure the new plan fits our desires for the evolution of Forest Hills. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Profeta. We'll now hear from Merle Ritchie. Ms. Ritchie, welcome. Please give us your name and address, and you also have three minutes.
My name is Merle Ritchie. I live at 1552 Hermitage Court, Mr. Mayor and Council. I've lived in four houses in Forest Hills since being born in Watts Hospital, now the North Carolina School of Math and Science, in 1942. Durham has always been a diverse city, but diversity has increased as population has grown. Durham is now on a roll. It is fully celebrating its diversity. Sometimes we think of diversity in terms of people, but I want to speak to you with regard to diversity in terms of neighborhoods. The feeling that I want to impart to you tonight is that Forest Hills represents a factor in Durham's diversity. It is internally diverse and externally diverse within Durham. If it is made more dense, it will lose its special character. Presently, I think all the races, Girls on the Run, Moonlight Biking, all the races, I don't have the statistics, but they all come by my house. And it's wonderful, really, and it's nice that they have this place where they can experience a tree cover and not so heavy traffic to have these activities which benefit our community greatly. Perhaps our diversity is what makes Durham special. We don't want to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. We should celebrate our diverse neighborhoods and not change the diverse character that has put Durham on the map. Please vote in favor of this amendment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ritchie. Ms. Ritchie, I run by your house a lot of Sunday mornings, but you really call it racing. I know they do. I know they do. Yes, that's true. Thank you. Mr. Clayton, welcome. You also have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tom Clayton. I've lived at 1016 Homer Street in Forest Hills for 33 years. Unfortunately, a couple of you have heard me make a very similar statement at the Durham or the city-county planning committee meeting recently, but I think it's most appropriate that I make the same point with the rest of you tonight. So what I'd simply like to say is that cities don't grow in concentric circles, as there are more significant factors impacting housing decisions like varied topography, prior development, proximity to transportation arteries, and existing commercial enclaves than imaginary lines on a map. The purely theoretical concept on which the current future land use map is based might be elegant in its simplicity, yet entirely flawed in depicting what exists. Far from conforming to homogenized tiers, Durham's multi-talented, innovative, and independent citizens have created a rich patchwork of neighborhoods and housing options throughout the city, which for the most part are quite viable. And now with the implementation of expanding housing choices and the affordable housing bond can become an even more beautiful, thoroughly realized quilt. So I urge you to support the proposed Forest Hills Amendment to the Flum as a step away from the hopelessly flawed "donuts of density" concept and a step toward a comprehensive plan that more appropriately reflects the multi-hued city we all have built and which provides an effective way forward that avoids the imposition of such an ill-fitted, entirely artificial construct. Thanks so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clayton. And now we'll hear from Ms. Pless. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Shul. I'm sorry, I forgot to write my name on the card, and I appreciate you catching it for me.
Not a problem. In return for you correcting my math.
Thank you.
Please give us your name and address. You also have three minutes.
Yes, indeed. My name is Ellen Pless. I live at 706 East Forest Hills Boulevard. And you have heard the staff's report, so this is kind of a citizens' report. The site is located between Morehead Hill and Tuscaloosa Lakewood neighborhoods, both of which already have special designations. One has a local historic district and the other has an NPO. The site is not contiguous to the downtown. The site is developed and built out according to the original designer's suburban plan. That plan is associated, that plan and its associated district are recognized by the U.S. Department of the Interior and the National Park Service. The site contains a mixture of hardwood and pine forest, including old-growth trees surrounding an active and expanding FEMA floodplain, floodway, and floodway fringe. The site has numerous steep slopes and supports headwater zones for the most contaminated stream in Durham County, Third Fort Creek. Third Fort Creek flows into Jordan Lake and serves as a source of regional drinking water. In their 2019 Third Fort Creek TDML Response Plan, planning staff cite construction and development sources of sediment and runoff from impervious surfaces as significant contributors to the stream's unacceptable and worsening condition. Third Fort Creek's water quality indices continue to decline, excuse me, despite a previous stream restoration project. The site overlaps the National Historic District of Forest Hills, protections for which are available through the State of North Carolina Session Law 201586. The site is developed and built out according to the original developer's intentional suburban plan. Through consistent citizen stewardship, it has remained one of Durham's most intact historic assets for almost a century. The intentional suburban plan and curvilinear street layout support one of the historic district's most major landscape features, which is the hardwood and pine forest, for which many streets in the neighborhood and which, sorry, for which many streets and the neighborhood itself are named. In turn, the forest supports the environmental stability of the steep slopes and Third Fort Creek. The applicant proposes to adjust the future land use map to more closely match the environmentally sensitive, built-out environment, whereas the current future land use map prescribes densities that fundamentally threaten the forest, the recognized historic built environment and its setting, and the damaged creek. This application is consistent with compliments and/or is supportive of the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 5, the Eno Hall Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, Third Fort Creek 2019 TDML Response Plan, North Carolina Session Law 201586, the National Historic Preservation Act, and the U.S. Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines for the Treatment of Historic Properties and Districts written by Sally Jewell and Ken Salazar. It is important to note that these guidelines call for, quote, "retaining the historic relationship between buildings and the landscape." Thank you. Please vote in favor of this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pless. Before I call the next two speakers, I just want to ask, is there anyone else? This is a public hearing item, and I have Mr. Dick Hales and Mr. Dan Bach who are here to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Gosh? Okay, did you do it on this item?
I did, and the next one.
Okay, well, I don't have the card, but... Mr. Gosh, are you an opponent or a proponent?
Proponent.
Proponent? You're right here. It's my apologies. Yes, you're a proponent, Mr. Gosh. Please go ahead. You have three minutes, and please give us your name and address.
No problem, and my name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 112 West Main Street here in Durham. Good evening. Mayor Shuler, whatever you're going by these days, and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and members of the city council.
Be careful, be careful, Gosh.
I didn't know. Anyway, I'll be brief in my comments because, you know, the residents here in Forest Hills have done a lot of great work and said a lot, I mean, said basically all there is to say. And frankly, I'm very proud of them for being a group of neighbors that has taken advantage of a development process which oftentimes I think neighbors find themselves trying to catch up when there is a development in their community, trying to catch up on learning how to do that and what it all means. And they have taken, I think, an extra step in actually taking advantage of the tools available to them in the Unified Development ordinance, which is not something, as Mayor Pro Tem Johnson alluded to, not something that you see happen all that often. And I think this case is important for exactly that reason, and I know that it's not conceptually something that we're used to seeing, and it's not, it's not an easy case. And I think the 6-6 vote at the Planning Commission, you know, supports that conclusion as well. But, you know, these neighbors, I think, are making a statement about what they would like to see in their community. And I know that there is an effort in the city to redo its comprehensive plan, rewrite its comprehensive plan. My sincere hope, regardless of what my clients think, and just as a citizen of Durham, my sincere hope is that we move away from the concentric circle ideas, because Durham is more than just a set of circles. There are neighborhoods in the urban tier, what we call the urban tier today, that are not urban in nature, and they were designed that way. And one of them is Forest Hills. And I think that in our next iteration of a comprehensive plan, I would hope that we take the time to be more intentional about how we're describing our different areas and what we want to see there in preserving some of those areas, those neighborhoods that are worth preserving. And I would say, I would argue that Forest Hills is one of those neighborhoods. Sure, it is not at a density that is consistent with what you would see in an urban tier. However, it is an important part of Durham that I think is worth preserving. And this application, of course, is not associated with any type of development plan or, you know, concept for the next construction. This is literally a policy statement, and these are your constituents, and they are asking you to make that statement. They are making the statement for you. They have applied for you to vote on that, and they hope, and I hope, that you will support their application tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gosh, and apologize to you that I didn't get you out there the first time. Our next two speakers are Mr. Dick Hales and Mr. Dan Bach. Let me ask again, if you all could please come over here to my right. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this item tonight? All right. Mr. Hales, welcome. You also have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm proud of my neighbors tonight, too. I live at 100 Briar Cliff Road in the Forest Hills neighborhood. I'm in the southwest part of the neighborhood where the lots are considerably more compact than the larger lots you see down along the park, up on Hermitage Court and other parts of the neighborhood. So I really don't have any opposition to anything I heard any of them say. It's just that the proposal on my property would make my property non-conforming with the future land use map, because my lot's a little less than four units per acre. In addition, the possibility of being able to build an accessory dwelling unit or a duplex, particularly in my part of the neighborhood where houses are smaller and so on, could make the density considerably higher than that. So I expressed this concern a year ago. I've talked to Mr. Brian and Mr. Gosh. And the southwest part of the neighborhood, particularly within a block or so of University Drive, the lots are considerably smaller, and the proposal for my property doesn't fit and technically makes me non-conforming. So that's why I'm speaking in opposition. I also definitely, I've lived in many locations around the city and county in the last 40 years, and I think the area fits in a suburban tier just fine. We have a shopping center nearby. We have a big park. We're close to restaurants out on Chapel Hill Boulevard and so on. I don't think that's really much different than if you lived in other large neighborhoods in East Durham, Trinity Park, Watts Hill and Dale and other places. I think, I certainly love being easy distance from downtown and everything down there, and I think that's a good reason to keep it urban tier. Thanks so much.
Did you say this is not different from suburban tier neighborhoods like Trinity Park, or did you say urban tier neighborhoods like Trinity Park?
I think it's similar to other urban tier neighborhoods.
Thank you.
You don't find neighborhood grocery stores in the middle of Watts Hill and Dale and not many parts of East Durham or Trinity Park either.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. Mr. Bach, welcome. Please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Dan Bach, 915 Urban Ave. It's this proposal. It goes against the staff recommendation. It goes against the Planning Commission recommendation. More importantly than that, I think it goes against our values as a city. Our values are, one neighborhood should not be able to come to the city council and get themselves exempted from the rules that apply to everyone else. In our city, growth should happen equitably, not just in gentrifying neighborhoods, but in all neighborhoods, including in Forest Hills and in my neighborhood, Trinity Park. In our city, growth should happen sustainably, not just by clear-cutting forests to build a car-dependent suburb outside of town, but through infill development, missing-middle housing built within walking and biking distance of employment centers and centers of shopping and other amenities. And so that's why I'm against this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. All right, this is a public hea- All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this item? Is there anyone else tonight who would like to be heard on this item? All right, now I'm going to ask council members if you have any questions or comments. Councilmember Freeman? Is that a yes?
I'll take a moment, I think Councilmember Austin.
Councilmember Austin.
Thank you. And forgive me for folks on the staff if you address this in your staff report, but could you discuss the alternatives that you referenced briefly in the staff report, the infill standards in local historic districts?
So, addressing infill standards would be, you know, form, setback...
Ms. Rosenberg, would you speak up a little?
Sure.
Thank you.
So infill standards, those could be fleshed out more fully in the future to include more standards regarding setback in form and the character of the neighborhood. And then the historic, local historic district would be a citizen-initiated request that would cover, you know, the historic portion of the neighborhood to cover, to preserve the historic character as has been described, covering landscape, site, and the actual building structures themselves.
Just one follow-up. If, let's say hypothetically, this neighborhood were to go through that process for the historic neighborhood designation and succeed, if an individual property owner wanted to, say, remove the historic designation from their property, is that something that would be possible? I'm just kind of trying to understand the parameters of this.
Once it has been designated?
Right, like hypothetically.
It would have to go through another process.
Okay.
It would have to come back to city council.
But it's possible, it's a...
Technically, it's possible. It might be expensive.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you. I might have a follow-up, but I'll let someone else jump in.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you. The last speaker kind of threw me off, and I have to say this. A resident from Trinity Park that has a historic district is telling Forest Hills that doesn't have a historic district, they shouldn't have a historic district. It just messed me up, I'm sorry. There were a number of concerns raised, or a number of reasons why this was raised, and I really appreciate, as a former inner neighborhood council president and member, the thought that you've put into this process and recognizing that there's not very many handles that neighbors have to do anything about what's happening in their neighborhood around development. And so I can appreciate what you're trying to do and trying to put some parameters around how development happens in your community. I do also understand the comment around, I think it's Dick Hale, and saying that your property would be nonconforming, but it would only be an issue if you were planning to tear your house down. Could staff help me with this? And then also with the ADU, the expanded housing choices is not prevented by the density, it's not prevented by any of those things that were raised. And I'm just trying to make sure that I have this clear in my mind before making a decision. So it wouldn't prevent you doing accessory dwelling units, and it wouldn't prevent you from, I mean, it doesn't force you to do anything different with your property. Am I right? Like, am I missing something here?
Good evening again, Pat Young of the Planning Department. So right, nothing in this proposal would prohibit nonconformities from continuing, and nothing in this proposal would undo the provisions that you all recently passed in the expanding housing choices.
Thank you. And so I just want to note that this was the issue in passing the expanded housing choices I was concerned around and not having the conversations on a more local, kind of localized basis so that neighborhoods understand what their handles are. You get this kind of knee-jerk reaction to try and stem the tide of having, you know, any untold number of units being added or developments happening. And I think that I'm clear that we just need to be better stewards of how, or better communicators in how we provide these resources that should be available through planning and zoning to community members who feel like there's an upcoming zoning or parcel that should be addressed. I don't know that this overarching push is really where you want to, the direction you want to go, but I mean, if the purpose or the point is to get to the fact that it takes three to five to seven years, like in our case for the local historic district, and you don't want to be, you don't want to have a number of developments coming along in that time period, I think it's important to know that if you've already acquired an attorney from Morningstar Law Group, that they could essentially, like, assist with that. So I'm trying to understand how this all came to be at this point where you have an attorney and you're putting forth a plan to change the flum for the whole neighborhood.
That was a question, right? You were, yeah, okay.
Is that a question, councilmember?
Yes, that is a question.
Mr. Goesch?
Yes, Mr. Goesch, if that's...
Yeah.
Or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Profeta.
So when we met with the neighbors in Forest Hills, the first thing we talked about doing, and in fact, the first thing we attempted to do was to apply for an NPO. And that, I know you know how that process works, but just for everyone's edification, you know, it was, it was on the back of the Old West Durham NPO, right? So we applied after that one was approved. And I think that, at least my understanding, is the Old West Durham NPO, that process maybe didn't work out the way that everyone had hoped that process would work out. And so there had been, I think, some discussion with planning staff and probably amongst you all about changing that process. And that is, that's the point at which we applied for an NPO in Forest Hills. And it was, I will say, tumultuous to get that thing to, I mean, to JCCPC, whether it was going to be prioritized. It was also on the same budget as the current rewrite of the comprehensive plan. So it was prioritized, but there was no money to pursue it in, you know, in terms of the budget. So that application has fallen off the map. But I want to be clear that this neighborhood has tried to take advantage of the other tools in the UDO. And just the way it all shook out, the NPO application is now, at this point, essentially expired. It's not going to be prioritized before it ever gets any work done to it. And so one of the other things we did, which is going, in our minds, is less effective than an NPO would have been, was this, apply for a future land use map change, which is a process that can be run through its entirety without a lot of staff hours, so it doesn't have that same prioritization type of limitation that an NPO or local historic district would have had. So, you know, we were working from a limited bag, and we actually did try to make use of other tools in that bag. It just wasn't successful, not for lack of trying, just for lack of budget, frankly. And so we're also taking advantage of another tool in that bag.
I appreciate that. And then I just had a question for staff. I would, if you have a clarification, I think that...
I was just informed by Ms. Pliss that actually we were able to get reprioritized for the NPO with the JCC, all the acronyms. Yeah, yeah. And so we are not technically on the part that we were able to get it. I, since I have the microphone, just want to sort of speak to, we have looked at, like, we do want to pursue every option we have. We're not asking for stasis. We're asking, while we can work through the comprehensive planning process, while we can work through the NPO process, to stop this complete, you know, this similarity between the way we're zoned and the way we're planned. And just if you could, so the request here is really for the neighborhood to be able to not have to fight any other processes come through while we do it, while we work in partnership with you to figure out the right way for this neighborhood to evolve with the city. And if there was anything that was not in compliance or conformity with this, that was not our intent. Our intent was for this, every parcel being conformity with what we were requesting.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with staff on the noting that it is within your, is it in this year's work plan, next year's work plan? And then also noting, like, I'm concerned that this is going to create a situation where more residents are going to feel like this is the only option they have to kind of stem the development that's urbanizing their community based on their understanding of what's happening in planning and zoning.
Well, I'll first, Councilmember Freeman, I'll first just co-sign what Mr. Profeta just said. Earlier this month, the Joint City County Planning Committee did re-endorse, reprioritized the NPO application, so we will be seeking resources for that. We don't currently, as same as we were, same situation we were in this time last year, we do not have the internal resources since we're doing the comprehensive plan primarily internally. So we will be seeking a potential budget allocation if that council wants to resource that item. I think Ms. Rosenberg did a nice job of characterizing the opportunities available through the local historic district and then through any potential modifications to the infill standards. If I might take just a moment, I think I would want to acknowledge on the record, kind of consistent with what I think was in your staff report from Ms. Rosenberg, that the tier model that was developed with 2005 comprehensive plan was, is imperfect. It does kind of look at concentric rings, going from the middle. We all know cities don't develop that way. But what it was getting at was a very, at the time, very innovative idea, which is that we want different things from different place types. We want them to feel different and operate differently. And there are now place-type models in planning that are much more subtle and nuanced and sophisticated, and we intend on using those with the comp plan update that's underway. The 2005 comp plan had density as a foundation. I think we want to look more at form and function and impact on services and infrastructure. So that's, again, consistent with that more nuanced approach to a place type. But I will kind of end quickly with, I think, what we are using as a guiding principle, unless we get substantially different input from you all or from the public, which is that the high demand for urban living and the scarcity of urban land are the key drivers of housing unaffordability in Durham. And we think every neighborhood needs to be able to adapt incrementally and modestly to change. And if we're going to begin to substantially address our housing affordability problem, you all approved a project late 2018 in this neighborhood called Pinecrest Project. There was, went from 12 acres with one unit on it to, well, there are going to be 57 or 60 units. And we think because of the design commitments and other review that you all provided that project, it's going to be very context-sensitive and fit in with the neighborhood without damaging, destroying, or diminishing the character of Forest Hills neighborhood. So there are opportunities for substantially increased density without creating the negative impacts we've heard about from the proponents tonight. So thank you for the opportunity to just expand on those items.
Just one more question, Patrick, around the, I guess, the availability or of staff. And I think it's clear that the resources are slim in planning to even address. And so anytime you see residents hiring an attorney, seriously, there's already an issue, because I think it should be a public service that we're providing to our residents, especially as taxpayers, to make sure that they have the information and like available resources. And so is there anything in your work plan that's going to address that aspect of this conversation? Because I think that this case would be very different had the residents in the community had access to staffing.
The best way I can answer that, Councilmember Freeman, is our intent is to address that through the comprehensive plan process and applying this place-type rubric, which allows, looks at more at form and function rather than density, and addresses the concerns, the rightful concerns the neighbors have about protecting character, neighborhood quality, environmental quality. To do it on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis is incredibly resource-intensive. We spent over 1,700 hours on the Old West Durham NPO, and with us implementing the comp plan, we don't have those resources in-house. So that's why we'll be seeking resources for an outside consultant to help with that.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, councilmember. Other councilmembers? Questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. A couple of questions for staff. Lots of up and down tonight. Thanks. If this, if Forest Hills were part of the suburban tier, would that prevent a resident from converting an existing home into a duplex?
Duplexes are allowed because of the enhanced housing choices.
So the expanding housing choices provisions are applicable within certain districts in the suburban tier. And it's a smaller list of districts than are applicable in the urban tier. I'll have to, I don't want to speak from the hip on what those are, but the RS-20 district, which is somewhat prevalent in Forest Hills, is already exempted from some of those provisions. It may limit the flexibility of EHC in some of the districts. So if you look on, it's on page nine of the staff report, it goes through item by item where those changes would be. So it would not limit the ability to do the duplex in the, in the... So bear with me.
Sure, thank you for looking at it.
Yeah, the, right, so the duplexes are already disallowed in the RS-20, but in RS-10 and RS-8 districts, it would be disallowed if it was converted to suburban tier.
So in part of the neighborhood, part of the neighborhood is already not allowed to do duplexes even under EHC? It would disallow it in the part that is currently allowed?
That's correct.
Okay. And is that the same for doing the small house, small lot, flag lot situation? Okay. Are there any other ways that it would functionally limit, that this change would functionally limit people from building exist, like, building more units on their existing lots? I can't think of anything else, but...
Only the ways that we just discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, because the provisions you referenced are tier-specific in the EHC.
Right.
The other EHC provisions would apply, but those would be limited.
Okay.
Councilmember Caballero?
I have a follow-up question to that. Thank you. So based on that, but with local historic districts and MPOs, most of the EHC stays intact?
That's right. The local historic districts don't speak to the underlying zoning. What they do is allow a case-by-case consideration of the design to ensure that it's historically contextual.
So by designating this whole area as suburban, it basically usurps EHC?
It reduces the applicability of some of the provisions of EHC.
Thank you.
Within some of the districts, the only districts that are in Forest Hills.
Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Romulan leader Nero in the Star Trek movie, when Spock was about to crash into their ship and ignite the red matter, said, "Fire everything." And that's what Forest Hills is doing. They, I actually pushed for the NPO to be reprioritized, and it was. So there's an NPO live, and this request is live right now. So they are almost firing everything. I don't know if there's a historic designation request forthcoming. Every neighborhood is special. Hayti is the actual golden goose of Durham, special. East Durham, special. Waltham, special. Forest Hills has retained its character for years, even while downtown was blighted. So what's happened? What has happened now is the market is asserting itself. That's what's happening. And neighborhoods want to protect themselves from the market asserting themselves. No problem with that. Some neighborhoods have fared better than others in our city's history. I'm glad the development, and I forget the name, but that was alluded to earlier, where we approved a character-sensitive and aesthetic-sensitive development in Forest Hills, I forget the name of it, but we approved it, and I think that... that demonstrated our ability to, as a council, the people you hire, to respect the character of a neighborhood on a case-by-case basis. But it seems to me to use government power to essentially, at least in my assessment, dramatically change a designation to protect an area essentially from market forces when we can't do that for any other area that's being gentrified. Government can't do anything about getting Hayti back or East Durham. The market is the market, we always say. And to suggest that, you know, in the prior case, I talked about urbanizing the suburban tier. And now we're talking about codifying the suburbanization of the urban tier. Because, and I think, I think the most telling phrases I've heard were "character" and "feel of the neighborhood." I get it. I get it. We want to preserve the character and preserve the feel of the neighborhood. To the point where we're being asked to disavow or disregard the recommendation of the staff, to go against our comp plan, and to change our future land use map. And it may be precedent, I don't know, but from a neighborhood that, that most people, I think, in our city consider downtown to the suburban tier. I'm wondering if we can preserve the character and feel of Forest Hills while also preserving our integrity as a government. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think on a case-by-case basis, you got the NPO already in the chamber. A historic designation might be something worth looking at. But I think on a case-by-case basis, and it's a beautiful neighborhood, we can preserve, but there are many of them in Durham, we can preserve the character of this neighborhood without so blatantly using government power to, to essentially change the rules or flip one, even if it's within our ability. I'm wondering how the rest of the city, particularly folk who live in neighborhoods, that the government could not preserve the character or preserve the feel. How it would appear to them for us to do this in, in opposition to the staff's recommendation, in opposition to where we say we're going as a city, particularly in the urban tier. Nobody wants to destroy Forest Hills. We've passed tree canopy standards. We've got all kinds of things in the pipe to preserve our city as a whole and character in our city as a whole. Nobody wants to deserve, destroy the character or feel of Forest Hills. There's no neighborhood envy going on here. But I think we ought to be very careful about the message we send if we use the authority of this government to just simply call it suburban because of concerns about character and feel. And those concerns about character and feel are now prevalent because of market forces, market forces that are having its way all over the city right now. That's what this is about. The folk are now at your gate. And what's going on in downtown and what's going on in this city is now upon us. And that's why we're here now. And I think the question before us is, are we capable as a city with sending a message about values to the rest of our residents and preserving the character and feel of this incredibly beautiful neighborhood among many beautiful neighborhoods in this city? That's what's informing my vote. That's what I'm struggling with right now. And I've yet to hear a compelling case as to why we need to change the flum as opposed to doing what we've been doing and preserve the character and feel of this neighborhood while not signaling to the rest of the residents in this city that, you know, we'll just change designations or tier designations if you present the right case. I'm, I'm struggling with this. As a resident, as a citizen of Durham, I love the feel of Forest Hills. I love many neighborhoods, going through many neighborhoods. And I understand the character and the feel sentiments about the neighborhood. But we are, this is one of those moments where I think the decision we make will send a signal to a lot of people in this city who, far beyond Forest Hills, and it'll also point to, I believe, values. We should protect and preserve Forest Hills to the best of our ability, but we should do it while able, by being able to look the rest of our residents and citizens in the eye as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this item who has not been heard? All right. Any other comments by members of the council at this point? If not, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and the matter is now before the council. I actually have some comments. Anyone else have any comments?
Sure.
Councilmember Austin?
Sure. And I'll largely kind of echo my colleague. So first, I also kind of appreciate the goal of preserving the character of this neighborhood. I understand that and appreciate it to some extent. Forest Hills is a beautiful neighborhood. I do think, along with my colleague, that this flum change creates too many concerns for our infrastructure and our values for it to be a good decision for the city. We can't simultaneously promote density and promote the values that kind of underlie the expanding housing choices initiative and also approve this kind of carve-out. So I intend to vote against this flum change, but I do want to kind of say and reiterate that I appreciate the goal, and I am interested in alternatives, whether it's the local historic neighborhood designation or the NPO process, which we might have an opportunity to have some input on in this budget cycle, this upcoming budget cycle. I'm interested in those and kind of look forward to hopefully kind of continuing this conversation, but just not through this mechanism. So.
Thank you, councilmember. Other council, Councilmember Reese?
I promise I will be gentle with everyone's time. First, I wanted to say that as with every kind of resident-initiated process, I have so much respect for the folks that go out and do this. As we said, when the, when the last NPO was here before us, this is one of the only, the NPO and this kind of flum amendment are some of the only levers available to ordinary residents to impact directly these types of planning issues. And so I know it's not easy to come up with this stuff. It's not cheap. And I respect the work that's happened with it. I think my concern about the, as Councilmember Middleton said, Forest Hills saying, "Fire everything," is that we are not about to start or put it, making an effort to, as Mr. Goche said, but we are actually currently rewriting our comprehensive plan. That's work that is happening right now in consultation with many people across the city, using an engagement, a community engagement process that is going to be cutting-edge and world-class and that will, I think, uncover many issues like the issues raised by folks today with respect to the flum amendment and other parts of the city. And I just think, from a process perspective, it doesn't make any sense to me to amend the flum right now for this particular process, for this particular neighborhood, when, as our planning director has said, the concentric circle model is an outdated way of thinking about it. And our new comprehensive plan will come up with lots of better secret sauce to solve these problems, aside from the, from the concentric circles. So for that reason, I'm going to oppose the flum amendments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments from councilmembers at this point? Councilmember Freeman?
I just want to make sure that I make clear that I, I can't see how a flum is how we end up at this point without recognizing that this is an, like, this is a miss from the city's standpoint and not being able to reach. This has been an ongoing issue for community residents. As a, like, as a resident myself, I faced this with Golden Bell. And as the inter-neighborhood council president, I faced it with a number of other issues that have come up to a, like, that have arisen in having conversations with the planning department. And what I'm consistently noting each and every time is that we don't have enough planning staff to cover the area of how much our city has grown and to the level that we need. So that each and every neighborhood is respected in a way that makes them feel included in the process of planning, which is why I've been consistent in saying that we need to do the planning at a level that is, that is engaging on a neighborhood basis so that there is some, some feedback, because it doesn't feel like that's going to happen the way that things have been going in the past. And I will say that, you know, history is the best predictor of the future. And based on how the NPO process was handled, I would, I would be here. I mean, if I were in your shoes in Forest Hills, I could see being here saying, you know, "You guys are ignoring me, and I have to pay an attorney to come here and say the thing so that you will pay me attention." And so just noting, like, I recognize that this month, this NPO was submitted at least a year ago. And while I may not agree with the context of how it's set, recognizing that, I do think that this, this area can afford more density, I don't think it's appropriate to push density onto neighborhoods like Forest Hills. And so I'm mindful of the tension, but also recognizing that. I want to be clear that I do support building more density in that area. I actually was one of those folks who were pushing for Pinecrest to actually build more units. And so I hear you. I think we need to do a much better job of making sure that we hear you consistently over the course of the year, because work plans are developed in a silo. And once we see them, it's kind of like you got to fight to jockey to get your project ahead of another project, and it doesn't always work out for you year after year after year. And so that process has not been updated. It hasn't changed since I've been here, and I'm committing to you all to make sure that I pay closer attention to it, because it's unfortunate that you have to go through this flum process to try and make the changes necessary to feel the protections that you need for your neighborhood are in place. That being said, I cannot support using a flum change to make this adjustment. But I will support pushing forward your needs and desires for your neighborhood to keep its character and context in our community, because it is important. I did not graduate from Durham High School in 1979, but I can realize, like, I realized what the, what it means to, to grow up here in Durham and watch every single street that you go down change, block by block, and not have any say-so over it. And so I just want to be mindful of those things and note that I, I hear you, but I can't, I can't support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments? I have a few. I appreciate very much the residents who have done the work to be citizen planters. And it's hard, I know that. We have a lot of residents in our city who are working hard on all kinds of issues, and this is an important one. And I want to appreciate you all for doing it. But I do have to make a decision on this, not based on who's bringing it to us. And I'm very appreciative that you all are doing the work to bring it to us, but on the merits. And let me just tell you my thoughts about the merits. I do believe that the staff response to this was very compelling. I think that the problem with privileging Forest Hills in this way would be that it would have deleterious effects on other neighborhoods. I don't believe that the expanding housing choices will result in a change in character in this beautiful, tree-lined Forest Hills neighborhood that we all cherish, whether or not we live there. But I do believe that will result, result over time in some increase in density in Forest Hills. And as in all of our central city neighborhoods, and that this is very important to the life of our city, that this be a possibility. No central city neighborhood should be granted the status of effectively being single-family only, while other neighborhoods in the urban tier are and always have been open to other types of housing. And also, it is true that Forest Hills was originally developed as a suburb. I live in Watts Hillendale. It was also originally developed as a suburb. And I don't think that either of our neighborhoods are by any reasonable definition of the term suburbs. I hear what you're saying about the topography and so forth, but in my, in my belief, Forest Hills, like my neighborhood, is right smack dab in the center of Durham and clearly should remain in the urban tier. I have also another concern, and it's an enormous concern for me, that supporting this application would simply open the door to other neighborhoods in the urban tier coming to the council for their own special exceptions. How would we deny them those exceptions if we granted this one? Each of those neighborhoods would have good reasons, as you all have, and it would, it would result, I think, in, and Councilmember Middleton said this earlier, and I completely agree, with a, with a situation that would be untenable. The Forest Hills neighborhood is beautiful. It's very special. But as you all know, and as you've said, it's no more special than the many other neighborhoods in Durham, which are inside the urban tier. Each of them is special in their own way. And each of them should share the same opportunities for the creation of duplexes, flag lots, and density. I do not believe by any stretch of the imagination that the policies that we have on the books now are going to have, I can't remember the exact term that was used earlier, but are going to change the essential character of Forest Hills or going to damage it in any way. I believe that Forest Hills is going to continue to be a neighborhood that's very beautiful, that is tree-lined. It may have a couple more duplexes than it used to. Expanding housing choices, just to put it in perspective, is predicted to produce about 45 more units citywide in the next year. We're not expecting that expanding housing choices will create a whole ton of new, of new housing. We are expecting that over time it will marginally increase density. And I think that's a very good and very important thing. So I'm going to be voting against the proposal. I appreciate the work that's gone into it, but in my mind, the merits are clear. All right, colleagues, I'll now accept a motion on the item.
Second.
If I can get to my agenda here on my iPad, I can tell you.
I move we approve a consistency.
Thank you. There's a motion that we approve the consistency statement. It's been seconded. Madam Clerk, will you please open the vote?
What?
I'm sorry. Could you open the vote again? Please close the vote.
The motion fails 7-0.
Thank you very much. Do we need to do the other ones? Do we do the other, Madam Attorney?
No, because I don't adopt the consistency.
All right. So we did not adopt the consistency statement, so we will not be taking up the other motions. Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone who came today. I know this is disappointing for some of you, but I think we have given good deliberation and tried to make a decision on the merits. So thank you very much. We'll now move to item 17. Let me remind colleagues that it's now 10:47, and we do still have two more items. Item 17, Consolidated Annexation Kendrick Estates. Emily Struthers, welcome. We'll now hear the report from staff.
Good evening. Emily Struthers with the Planning Department. I will now present consolidated annexation item Kendrick Estates, BDG 1900014 and Z1900049A. Request for utility extension, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change have been received from Neil Goche of Morningstar Law Group for 20.927 acre parcel located at 3,500 Randolph Road. The property is contiguous to the city limits by the northwest corner of the property. Additionally, the property is connected to existing city limits by two lengths of Kendrick Road right away. If this annexation petition is approved, two areas within the county will become surrounded by city limits, creating what is referred to as donut holes. The site is presently zoned residential suburban-20, RS20, and staff recommends an exact translation of the zoning designation. Based on an administrative site plan that is currently under review, the development is anticipated to include 38 single-family lots utilizing the cluster subdivision development standards. Cluster subdivision standards allow for reduced lot size. Cluster subdivision standards allow for reduced lot sizes in exchange for an increase in open space area. Again, this is a, in relation to administrative site plan, which we don't typically have when we're reviewing annexations.
Ms. Struthers, could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Sure. What I'm referencing there is that we have a site plan that's currently under review administratively. We don't typically have a site plan to reference when we're doing annexations. So this, I am providing more information than sometimes because more information is available than sometimes.
Understood. Thank you.
That development, through that site plan would have to meet or exceed ordinance requirements. And with regards to open space, as that's been an item that has come up recently, the site plan would include access to Hollow Rock Nature Park. 30-foot natural buffers are shown between the site and the adjacent parcels and that parcel specifically is not identified on the New Hope Creek corridor open space as an area with recommendations. So given that background on the site plan aspect of it, jumping back into the annexation specific elements, city and county operational departments such as solid waste, fire, police and EMS have reviewed this request and have not identified any significant negative service delivery costs or impacts. The Public Works and Water Management Department performed the utility impact analysis for the utility extension agreement and determined that the existing City of Durham water and sanitary sewer mains have capacity to serve the project. The Budget Management Service Department performed a fiscal impact analysis which determined that the proposed annexation will become revenue positive immediately upon annexation. Should the council act favorably tonight, approval of the annexation petition and zoning would become effective on December 31st, 2019. Staff determines that these requests are consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is for the consistency statement and the third is to adopt zoning ordinance. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Struthers. You've heard the report from staff and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. And first I'm going to ask, are there any questions by members of the council for staff? All right, hearing none. We do have a number of speakers. I'm going to ask, a couple of speakers have signed up and did not indicate whether or not they were proponents or opponents. So Ms. Driscoll, are you here? Are you a proponent or an opponent? Opponent. And Ms. Boyarsky? Not sure yet. Okay. Thank you. All right. We have signed up one proponent. That is Mr. Gosh. We have Ms. Boyarsky and then opponents, we have one, two. We have 14 opponents. I'm going to give each speaker two minutes. Two minutes. Mr. Gosh, I'll give you more time than that since you're the only proponent. I'll give you five minutes, Mr. Gosh, and I'll give all of the, each of the opponents two minutes and as well as you, Ms. Boyarsky. All right. Mr. Gosh, we'll start with you. Welcome. Please give us your name and address and you have five minutes. And you can, if you want to reserve some of your time, Mr. Gosh, feel free to do so.
Thank you and good evening again. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morning Star Law Group at 112 West Main Street here in Durham. I'm representing the applicant for this annexation tonight. I'm going to reserve the, the majority of my time, but I will start just by simply saying this annexation request is kind of a unique one in the city of Durham because the county properties that are, that abut our proposed annexation area actually are serviced today by City of Durham Utilities Sewer and Water. So while it does create a technical donut hole, there actually are utilities being run right down Randolph Road, right in front of the property that we're having annexed. And there are county properties that are being serviced by City of Durham Utilities. So we're not creating kind of a satellite area where you're going to have to extend services to an area where you otherwise wouldn't have to run the garbage truck already. It's already going there. It's just that those areas are operating on a double rate for water and sewer rather than being directly annexed into the city through an agreement that my understanding isn't typically used anymore. So I don't think we have that available to us to, you know, get access to city water and sewer through a double rate, which is why we're applying for annexation. So I'll reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gosh. All right. We will now hear from, I'm going to call the rest of the speakers and if you all could go over here to my right as I call your name. First we'll hear from Barbara Driscoll, second, Gail Boyarsky, and third, Tiffany Friesen. I hope I've got your name correct. And if you all could come over here to my right and we'll begin with Ms. Driscoll. Ms. Driscoll, welcome. Please give us your name and address and you have two minutes.
Hi, Barbara Driscoll. I live at 504 Red Bud Road in Chapel Hill. I'm here on, as the president of New Hope Audubon, which covers Durham, Orange and Chatham Counties. In 2006, Durham, Chapel Hill, Orange County and Durham County all came together to create Hollow Rock Park in order to protect this critical corridor which connects the Enel River watershed to the Jordan Lake watershed. New Hope Audubon has several concerns about this proposed development which borders Hollow Rock Park. The Baker Development is proposing to clear cut 20 acres of land next to the park, which will create an edge effect. The area of the park closest to this open edge will feel more impacts from wind, invasive plants and will no longer get the protection afforded by contiguous forest and brush. In addition to the loss of habitat, there will be new neighbors whose land has no protection or buffer for the current woods. Their property will create runoff and degradation of the park, especially in light of the frequent heavy rains that we have been receiving lately. Our recommendations are to increase the buffer next to the park to no less than 50 feet, consider options other than clear cutting, leaving some existing trees which will increase residential home values, cut the number of lots to 35 or fewer, require native trees and shrubs to be planted, no invasive plants to be planted, discourage or eliminate lawns, reduce or halt the use of fertilizers and reduce street lighting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Driscoll. Ms. Boyarsky, welcome. Please give us your name and address and you also have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Gail Boyarsky. I live at 6410 Mimosa Drive in Chapel Hill. I'm actually right over the county line from Durham and some of my neighbors have a Durham address. And just so that you don't think I'm an outside agitator, I am a native of Durham and I'm going to my 50th Durham High School reunion in April.
There you go.
So I'm not going to, I'm, I'm coming to you as a citizen. I was a member of the first New Hope Corridor Planning Commission that started in 1989. Our, our charge, and I'm going to quote then Mayor Chester Jenkins, is to preserve an open space corridor linking the Enel River State Park, the New Hope Creek Army Corps land and the growing communities of Durham, Chapel Hill and Carboro for aesthetic, educational and recreational purposes as a means of shaping the urban form of the environment. We started work in 1989 and the master plan was adopted by the town of Chapel Hill, the city of Durham, both Durham and Orange County in 1991, the beginning of 1992. I have to say it was historic that all four of these jurisdictions worked together since we all know that that's not usually done in this area sadly. So I'm not really speaking for or against rezoning. I'm just saying that the city of Durham, there are lots of reasons to be careful about how that land is treated. Anything we do there will have an enormous impact on the New Hope Creek, which is drains into Jordan Lake, which is a drinking source. And I'm asking that whatever is done that the council consider how to minimize the negative effects on the New Hope Creek, the New Hope Creek Corridor. I think, I don't need to go through all the corridor acts as wildlife habitat. It's got important botanical interests. It's one of the few open spaces left between Durham and Chapel Hill. It's having a corridor keeps the wildlife being fragmented. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more thing and that is the city of Durham and lots of people have made a big investment and a lot of effort has gone into this. I just ask you to honor that investment and that commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Boyarsky. We'll now hear from Tiffany Friesen. Welcome, Ms. Friesen. Did I get your name right?
Yes, thank you.
Great. And please give us your name and address. We have two minutes.
Okay. Hello, I'm Tiffany Friesen and I live at 4313 Branchwood Drive, a few blocks away from where Kendrick Estates will be built. I received an email today about this issue and wanted to share my personal experience with stormwater with the city council. I live in a nearby development, Hope Creek, and the property I live at is frequently flooded by stormwater from blocks away. The current path designed for stormwater does not provide for the volume of water that comes from Pickett and Cambridge Roads and upstream from that location and Kendrick Estates will be very close to Pickett and Cambridge Roads. Four homes, including the one I live in, routinely have flooded yards, landscaping destroyed and standing water sometimes for days or weeks. And this is from water upstream that makes it weigh, that makes it weigh above ground to New Hope Creek. The path it currently takes goes through our yards and through the adjacent school's property. I am concerned more development nearby without assessing this existing issue and solving it will make it much worse. To protect our foundation and physical structure, we've raised the backyard two feet and put in a stone wall, added a new sub-pump with a water backup in case power goes out and purchased flood insurance, but it doesn't solve the water problem, it only protects our home. Prior to this, we routinely had up to two feet of water during storms in our backyard, sometimes pouring into our foundation. Another concern is what this current water issue and flooding does to the market value of these homes. A new developer may not be aware of how their plans affect us a few blocks away or realize the current design doesn't manage the current volume of stormwater. So please delay zoning for three months so this can be evaluated by city engineers and the impact understood to downstream property owners. This isn't just about how the developer manages water within their site, but how it affects the property owners downstream along the path the water takes to get to Hope Creek and the need for a dedicated path. Thank you for allowing me to voice my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Friesen. I appreciate your being here. I now like to ask three more speakers to come to my right. Thomas Link, Audrey Nguyen and Buck Horton. And we'll hear first from Mr. Link. Mr. Link, welcome. Please give us your name and address and you have two minutes.
Thomas Link, 126 Solterra Way, Durham. Our community, the co-housing community is also right next door, right next to this proposed project. And they proposing a 30, 30-foot barrier there with, with trees, but even their drawings show that the barrier is not there. They cut the barrier off where they have a traffic turnaround lane. So even their drawings don't comply with what they said they will. My main reason here, I just received a, the whole study of the New Hope Corridor Open Space Master Plan that was approved by City of Durham, Durham County, Orange County and Town of Chapel Hill in 1991 and 92. And the things that they raised, which were approved is preservation of 100-year flood plan, steep slopes should not be modified with 20% or greater, creation of open space and access areas, protection of wildlife, maintaining the environment, and a 200-foot buffer needs to be maintained adjacent to the flood plain. Now, I don't know if anybody studied any of this. I haven't, I'd like to know and this has to be studied either by one of your engineers or we'll hire one. And that's why I'm, I'm asking for a delay for three months so all of this homework can be done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Link. I appreciate your being here. Ms. Nguyen, welcome. You also have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Audrey Nguyen and I live at 134 Solterra, adjacent to the proposed development. As I'm sure you know, the Hollow Rock Nature Park was the culmination of much hard work and fundraising efforts by people from all walks of life, as well as the Durham and Orange County governments. With this in mind, I feel it's most important that the city of Durham now do everything within its power to ensure that there are no negative impacts to this magnificent open space that they helped to create. It was created as a gift for future generations and as such, we owe it to them to preserve what has been achieved so far. There are other major concerns about the annexation that other people would be addressing, so I will just speak of two. One, we are concerned about the public street lighting that would come with the development and request that it be as non-invasive as possible. Downward oriented street lights would decrease the amount of light pollution, which would not only have a positive impact on the neighboring homes, but the wildlife in particular. The proposed development will affect the wildlife in the park. Something as simple as downlit lights could limit that negative effect. Additionally, the proposed buffer between the development and the park is a concern. As currently proposed, in most areas, it's only 20 to 30 feet. This development borders onto a nature park that was created to preserve the land and its wildlife. Surely the buffer requirements for the nature park should require a different consideration than say if it bordered onto a strip mall. Therefore, I request that the size of the buffer be increased to limit the negative impact to parklands. One way to do this would be to reduce the number of proposed home sites. Once you clear cut and build on a parcel of land, there are no do-overs. Let's get this right to preserve what others before us have worked so hard to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We'll now hear from Mr. Horton. Mr. Horton, please give us your name and address and you have three minutes. I'm sorry, you have two minutes.
Okay.
As Mr. Horton is speaking, if Mr. Brett Walters and Ms. Catherine Stone and Miss Carrie Bishop Coon could also come to my right, that would be great. Go ahead, Mr. Horton.
My name is Buck Horton. I live at 156 Solterra Way in Solterra. About 24 years ago, when Solterra was formed, there was no park. We had no public access to that land and yet we built into our covenants a prohibition against using chemical fertilizers, non-organic fertilizers, pesticides, fungicides, et cetera, because we wanted to preserve the, you know, the pure water in those creeks. Part of that land was bought with money from the Clean Water Fund. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of it was donated by people from our neighborhood and neighborhoods all around Irwin Road. And a lot of, a lot of the reason was to preserve that land and not have it polluted. But for some reason, it's not in a watershed protection zone. I don't understand why that's true because it's the high part, it's the, the top of the valley that forms the, the park. And all the water that falls there and forms rain is going to go into those creeks. There's already been a little bit of erosion just from the minimal clearing that was done by a developer to make soil tests. I know they're going to have erosion control plans, but my experience with that is erosion control plans can fail. 30 years ago, I lived in a different neighborhood. They built an apartment complex on the hill behind us. The first rain, first big thunderstorm we had, my entire property, one and three-quarter acres was covered with mud. There was a creek there, beautiful, before the creek, before the flood, it was a nice little sandy creek that my kids could play in. It never recovered in the 17 years that we lived there. So my question is, what happens if the erosion control features that they do employ fail? Is there any? There's no, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horton. Mr. Walters, welcome. Please give us your name and address and you have two minutes.
Mayor Shul. Good evening, Mayor Shul. Members of council, my name is Brett Walters. I'm at 108.
I'm at 108 Solterra Way, in the Solterra neighborhood. Next door to us, as mentioned, is our Hallar Rock Nature Park. If you haven't been there, I suggest you go, it's beautiful. I was just there the other day hiking with the kids, we noticed a new beaver dam on New Hope Creek. This is within a couple hundred yards of Irwin Road, so the wildlife is thriving there. Tonight, I'm thinking about the theme of the Durham Sesquicentennial, particularly this question. What decisions do you, as a council, make and vote on that will become part of Durham's legacy 150 years from now? As you know, and you've heard tonight, the water that runs downhill from the land called Kendrick Estates makes its way to Jordan Lake, by way of New Hope Creek. That can be part of this legacy. Practically speaking, it's the drinking water for all of us here, our friends, families, neighbors of Durham. And clean water, I believe, can be one of those legacies we leave for the future generations of Durham. I would think all of us here would agree with that, but how do we, as a community, deliver on that legacy? I would argue it's through deliberate, methodical, and thoughtful consideration of items that come before this body that will have a potential impact. The future generations will look at not only what we pronounce by our actions and their second-order effects. To this end, I ask you to delay vote tonight on this. I don't think we know enough about the effects, you've heard some things just this evening that may be new information. I know that, like, as residents, we weren't notified, I think other stakeholders, truly for the New Hope corridor, were not notified, and so I would ask that you consider delaying, allow us to understand the effects, and really think this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Now we'll hear from Ms. Stone, and while Ms. Stone is speaking, if Ms. Bishop Coon...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Am I supposed to speak now? I'm sorry.
Hang on, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I heard her...
I'm sorry.
Silence.
No, hang on one second. Ms. Bishop Coon, Mr. Nekomias, not sure if I've got that name right, and Ms. Ballin could make your way over to my right. Thank you. Ms. Stone, sorry, you have two minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all, the city council, because you guys do a lot of work in regards to balancing the vibrant community that's growing and also preserving and being a steward of our environment, so thank you for that hard work. There's a couple of things, you know, 12 days ago, we received something in snail mail that said there's going to be an annexation and zoning change, and I had no idea what that meant, but over those 10 days, I've gained some information, and I have a lot of concerns, there seemed to be a number of inconsistencies. The annexing, R20, you know, when changing the zone from county to city, it doesn't seem like a lot on the books, but the reality of it, when you walk that property, there's a significant change. That property itself is also directly spoken about through the New Hope Corridor Plan. So, you know, Durham has five different conservation areas, and the first one that was ever created is the New Hope Corridor, and that's land that we're speaking about, that tract of land Kendrick Estates, is directly on that corridor. So, the decision you make here is really, I would say it's really historic for a number of reasons. The property itself, it borders the nature preserve, but it was also funded through the EPA's Clean Water Act of 300 and 3D program, which protects waters that are sensitive watershed areas. This property is uphill, it contains wetlands, it's on the 100-year plane, there's a wildlife area, it contains the easement, but I think the biggest thing is the fact that in the master plan that was created in 1991, there is reference to that specific piece of land, and it tells us what to do with it. And can I read that?
You may.
Okay. In this, so on page 36, it gives you a map of that component, which is component four, and this section, area A, is the property we're speaking about today. And then, two pages later, it tells us what the recommendations were made back in 1991, and it said, "The Durham County..."
Ma'am, would you get a little closer to the mic, please? Ma'am, would you get a little closer? Sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to make sure you guys could at least get a bit of a feel for it, but it said to acquire, the recommendation is to acquire the developmental rights to landzone R20, which is one dwelling per half an acre, so that the resulting density is one dwelling per two acres, which is considered, it's consistent with the rural buffer that they're trying to create. But the second part of this, which I think is really important, if that's not created, the second option is to make sure to preserve a 200-foot undisturbed buffer adjacent to the wildlife area and the flood plain. So, I feel like we already have a document that was created through Durham, City of Durham, Durham County, Orange County, City of Chapel Hill, that all came together for this.
Ms. Stone, thank you very much for your comments.
And I think we should use it, and I hope that you could just give us time.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Ms. Bishop?
It's actually Bishop Coon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I apologize, is Ms. Stone here? Sorry about that. Ms. Bishop Coon, my apologies, I...
Okay, thank you for the extra time.
Ms. Stone? Please give us your name and address.
I'm Catherine Stone, I live at 6 Blue Bottle Lane. Good evening, city council and Mayor Shul. I received the notice from the City of the proposed annexation of the undeveloped land to the east of the preserve. I did appreciate the time the developers took to meet with the neighbors after they were contacted with questions from us. It felt like they were responsive to our questions and following the city's planning rules. I did hear them address concerns of how the development would impact the park, however, I became concerned that it might have fallen off the radar, that this is not just a park, but a culmination of much hard work by multiple cities, counties, individuals, and organizations to preserve a special resource. The preserve adjoining the development is not just a park, but a part of the headwaters for New Hope Creek, which ultimately empties into Jordan Lake Reservoir. This serves as drinking water for a large portion of the triangle. After doing a small amount of research, I saw that the New Hope Creek Corridor Master Plan had some conservation easements abutting the land, easements to protect the water, wetlands, and unique flora and fauna. So, we have one chance to make sure all of the stakeholders are involved, including the New Hope Creek Corridor Committee Advisory Board, and I would ask the city to make absolutely sure they're doing their due diligence and to make sure the development will not create any long-term problems for the preserve that cannot be undone. I feel a delay on the annexation decision would be prudent to be absolutely sure any development is planned responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stone. And now, Mr. Nekomias.
Yes.
Sure how you say your name.
Counsel, I live at 122 Solterra Way, adjacent to the proposed development. Rather than reiterate what everybody has said, I just would like to say, I would like to ask for a continuance on this. The reason is, we see 50-foot buffer on a development that was approved. Here, we have a 30-foot buffer. The other night, the developers said in some places it might be as small as five to 10 feet. So, I would say there's a bit of disconnect here. Why does it get approved with a 50-foot buffer elsewhere, but here it might be approved with an average of 30 or maximum of 30? So, I would ask for a delay in order to further study the subject. Essentially, that's what my message is. Not anti-development, we'd just like to have smart development, and we would need to be on top of all of the factors. At the moment, we're not.
Thank you, Mr. Nekomias, I appreciate you being here. We'll now hear from Ms. Ballin, to be followed by John Kent and Joellen Mason. If you all could come over here to my right. Ms. Ballin, welcome, please give us your name and address, you have two minutes.
I'm Lois Ballin, I live at 122 Solterra Way here in Durham. I want to speak about two issues. The first one is lighting. The conditions of approval that were submitted by the developer to the city include requirements for lighting to be downlighting, and last week, when they came to our neighborhood to answer questions, which we actually really appreciated, they seemed not completely familiar with the concept of downlighting, so I just want to emphasize that downlighting makes a difference in the life of both the nearby residents as well as the wildlife that are in the preserve. So, actually, their conditions for approval define really clearly what the lighting should be, and I'm asking that if the development goes through, that the city make sure that they follow their conditions for approval, and that we, the city, we hold them accountable, that all exterior street and home lighting be downlighting. And I actually have this handout of, well, I'll give it to the developer, of appropriate and inappropriate types of lighting as examples. The second area I want to address has actually been addressed really clearly by most everyone else, and so I just want to reiterate that, I understand that smaller lots are in the plan so that they could put the 30-foot buffer between the lots and the preserve, and that trade-off, we don't know enough information to know that that is enough land to protect the preserve, and so I'm requesting that the decision about this project be deferred, be delayed, so that we can evaluate, and when I say "we," it's not "we the neighbors", we need to pull in some experts to evaluate the impact on the watershed. It's possible that decreasing the lots from 38 to a few, perhaps 32 lots, could allow for a larger buffer, but the most important...
Thank you very much, Ms. Ballin. We'll now hear from John Kent.
John Kent, 39, is this on? Okay.
Yes, it is, John.
Thank you. Yes, I did take the bus and the bike tonight, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, I live at 394 Cup Creek Road in Chapel Hill, and I'm a technical advisor to the New Hope Creek Corridor Advisory Committee.
John, can you step back just a little from the mic? Perfect, yeah.
Okay, so, this has not been routed through the commission, which was set up by the four jurisdictions that passed the New Hope Creek Corridor Open Space Master Plan back in 91, the City of Durham, County of Durham, Orange County, and Chapel Hill. And I am thinking that it's not unreasonable or unresponsible for the council to delay this and see that it's routed through the committee before acting on this. Also, for 29 years now, I have been checking the water in New Hope Creek. Last, we did our 350th month this weekend, and one of the best sites for habitat on New Hope Creek is Irwin Road, that's one of our sample sites from the beginning. And this drains through the park into that area. This is a robust area because you have the Duke Forest, good land use, and you have waterfalls that aerate the water. But if we abuse, we're just not going to keep the wildlife that we have. We have something like seven native mussels that are state-listed endangered in this area, and we need to keep that. Also, if you need an adequate buffer, you have what's called the edge effect from development over the property line, and it degrades into the forest. I am just, I just want, my final thing is, there has been a massive effort by the conservation community to study the Eno-New Hope Wildlife Corridor, and they have just come out with their plan, and that would be involved if we can get this put off, and better advice on how that, the New Hope Creek Corridor between the Jordan Lake, Jordan Lake Game Lands, the Duke Forest, and the Eno to the north, there is no alternative. If you've heard me talk, and Bob Healy would be here tonight, but he's not out of town, but on Patterson Place, and so we're back, same issue.
Thank you, Mr. Kent, thank you very much. Ms. Mason, welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Shul. I'm Joellen Mason, and I've been a resident here since 1993, and my current permanent address is 3822 Hill Grand Drive, which is not in any way adjacent to this property. I'm speaking from several perspectives, which may seem like odd bedfellows. I'm a realtor in the area and have had a career here since 94. You would think that I'd be all for more houses, especially this close to Duke. And I am asking for more time, just for this to be studied and reviewed more carefully, especially from the other odd bedfellow to this, which is that I have a very strong belief in environmental conservation. I served on Durham Open Space and Trails Commission for a while, and also on the Eno River Board. Procedurally, I just am concerned about the lack of voice in this, and that's where I would love to see some more of the time spent, if you will grant a delay for this. And I do respect the expense and frustration that that causes a developer. I know that there's a lot in that, especially if any funds have been borrowed for the land purchase, so I get that. However, I reached out today to colleagues at Durham Open Space and Trails who didn't, the ones I spoke with didn't know about this development. Also, reached out to Matt Kopeck with Environmental Affairs Board, he was here earlier, and he asked me, when he was leaving, if I would just reference his comments from before, that they'd like to be involved in the discussions, particularly when there's an environmental sensitivity. So, just requesting more time so that those processes can be included. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mason. All right, those are all the speakers that have signed up. Is there anyone else, this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to be heard who has not been heard tonight on this item? Yes? Come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi. My name is Spencer Jennings.
Please give us your address, and you have two minutes.
3612 Randolph Road, 3614 Randolph Road. I'm on the south side of the property, so I'm directly affected by the runoff in particular, and that's my biggest concern, is the amount of runoff that I'm going to experience as this development is built. My concerns are, it's going to probably devalue the property. We planned on building back on that property some time ago, and I had not gotten to that point yet, but my concerns personally is, we're going to be directly affected by the amount of runoff that's going to be directed on our land. I've seen the plans, I just got those today, so I've not had time to really get into detail on it, to study what the impact is going to be. I know that there's going to be, there's quite a bit of impervious area, 30%, I think, is going to be the area that's going to be impervious with the streets and the rooftops and driveways, and so there's going to be a lot more water flowing through that property. They've got a sedimentation pond built for it. I just don't know how that's going to work and how that's going to mitigate the amount of water that's going to be flowing through that area, so I'm just got really concerned about this, the stormwater runoff in that area, and as it personally affects me. And I'm in support of the Solterra neighborhood folks. I love the area, and I just want to preserve as much as possible, so...
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this item, who's not been heard? Mr. Gosh, you have reserved some time.
Thank you, and I'm glad I got to hear the comments from a lot of our neighbors at Solterra, who we did meet with, as I mentioned, and some other folks. But I will say, I was surprised to hear a lot of the misinformation just now, because, you know, we shared a lot of information with those folks, and then, and maybe we didn't do quite as good a job as we should have. But I want to make a couple of things clear. First of all, you can see Solterra neighborhood here in the blue, which ironically enough is about 37 lots on about 20 acres, which is the same type of development we're talking about in the area to be annexed. The other thing is the buffers. It was mentioned that the buffers might be as low as five feet and a maximum of 30 feet wide, and that's simply incorrect. It's a minimum of 30 feet, and that's, I don't know if the mouse works. No. Along the west side, that's a minimum of 30-foot buffer. On the north side, up against Solterra, our buffer is actually more like 100 feet wide. In fact, there's about one acre adjacent to Solterra on the north side that's completely undisturbed. The only place where there's five feet of grass is adjacent to those roads that come out to Randolph Road, and that's literally the grass strip next to the road. So there's far more than five feet of buffer around the entire thing. And I'm surprised to hear that that wasn't clear from us in our meeting with, with the folks in Solterra. I understand that there is a concern about runoff, and I know that this council is fully aware of the stringent requirements that the city has with respect to runoff. And to be clear, 100% of our impervious is treated on-site. The, what I'm hearing a lot of is, you know, that the annexation is going to allow them to build a lot more houses than they could in the county, and that is true. However, it's also important to understand what county development looks like. And what that looks like is multiple septic systems near these very important headwaters. And instead of getting a lot of very clear city-treated water and runoff, what you would get is effluent coming out of the, of the septic systems near this, near, near these important waters. But some of the environmental features on this property, I think, were overstated. We are not near a floodplain, and we don't impact any wetlands. There are important natural features here, and it is important to take a lot of things into consideration, especially with how the property drains. However, it's not accurate to say that we're impacting the 100-year floodplain or impacting wetlands. That's just not accurate, and all of that can be verified on the site plan. Full cutoff lighting is required in the City of Durham, and that's what we're using, and I believe the site plan will show that, or at least there is a lighting plan that would be associated with site, with site plan. And the other thing I want to touch on is that there's been a lot of talk about how this is a special resource, and we could not agree more. This is a small neighborhood that is not capable of supporting its own, you know, pool, clubhouse. We're only talking about a handful of homes. Our amenity for this neighborhood is Hollow Rock Park. So our interest in Hollow Rock Park matches that of the people who live there, and I recognize that we don't live there, and there isn't anyone living there yet, but that doesn't mean we don't care. We want Hollow Rock Park to continue to be a, a very important and beautiful feature in the City of Durham. Oh, and on the preservation, what I wanted to say is, the site is about 20 acres. Eight of it is open space in, on the site plan, eight acres of open space of the 20, and five of that is completely undisturbed. So this isn't, this is a cluster development that is meant to preserve open space on land. That is the point of a cluster development, and that's what we're trying to do, make a special neighborhood like Solterra near Hollow Rock Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gosh. Colleagues, you have heard the speakers, and I'll now ask if there are any questions or comments for staff. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Could you tell us what could be built here without the annexation?
So the buywright density permitted is the same. The difference comes down to needing the city utilities in order to construct that number of units.
So they, so even though the buywright density is the same, they wouldn't functionally be able to build as many homes if it were wells and septic? That's the...
Right.
Okay. Do you know, like, could you give me a ballpark of how many they would be able to build on wells and septic?
I, I don't have that expertise.
Think here comes Mr. Young. I bet he doesn't have it either, but he's going to pretend to have it.
I don't have expertise, but I've been doing this for 20, over 25 years, and I've seen a lot of sites very similar. The minimum without extraordinary and costly onsite enhanced septic systems, the minimum's usually an acre. So I think that probably the maximum would be about 20. It would probably be less, because not every lot can perk. So that's, I'm not an expert, but I have seen enough to feel comfortable saying that.
Thank you.
I consider you an expert in everything, Mr. Young.
Expert enough for me. Could you also give us a sense? So if there were a delay, residents are asking for a delay, and it seems they're asking for a delay for the planning department to do more research, to ensure that there wouldn't be an impact on the park. Is there any research that y'all could do, additional research, if there was a delay, to ensure that?
Well, I guess to, to answer that in part, I would say that we have done some research, especially as these concerns specifically have come up. So with reference to the open space plan, I had put on the screen there the location that was referenced by one of the speakers, just to clarify that the point, the, the area called out was not actually the area of site location. It's upsite, so that the 200 feet from the wetland, sorry, from the, from the floodplain wouldn't actually apply on this site. So with regard to the open space plan, we, we have done some review there. If we would be, I guess, open to further review by partner agencies. I think the thing to point out with this is that it is an annexation request, and annexations are effective quarterly. So with the December deadline, that's why we are likely here with their goal of completing that within the year. As far as any other additional research that staff could do, just keeping in mind that this is a direct translation and an annexation, so we don't have the opportunity for proffers to be applied through this mechanism with regard to additional buffers or different buffers or wetland sorts of things. It would be specifically meeting the ordinance requirements under the request that they've come in with.
Thank you. That's helpful. Can I ask Mr. Gosh a quick question as well? Could you give us the square footage and price point for the homes?
I think Mr. Bowles, who is with Kendrick, or I'm sorry, with Baker Residential would be better suited to answer that question.
Thank you.
Mark Bowles with Baker Residential, 401 Harrison Oaks Boulevard in Raleigh, or Cary, sorry. The, the square footage range will probably be approximately the upper 2000s to maybe the upper 3,000 square foot, and prices probably starting in the mid 300s.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Other questions?
I just had a question for staff regarding, I think I heard a comment around this plan or this annexation, or some part of this needing to go before a different body before coming to us, or in some way. And I just wanted to hear if you had a response to that comment that was made.
Sure, there is reference to the reviews by DOST or other environmental-specific groups. This annexation, since it doesn't have a development plan with it, that there's not, much to it was not sent to those departments. Typically, annexations are sent to a limited number of departments, so this has not been routed through them.
Yeah, thank you. I want to, I think that's worth repeating, because, as Mason mentioned, for example, it had not gone to DOST. So just to explain that, if there is a rezoning, it goes to lots of our different commissions for them to comment on. But since this is a direct translation of the county zoning to the city zoning, that is usually not sent to our various boards and commissions, which I was wondering about after you made that comment. So I appreciate that clarification. I have a couple of questions as well. Mr. Young, were you going to make some comments?
I mean, just to quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to address, expand on Mr. Rutherford's response to the Mayor Protem. I think, obviously, you know, we're willing to take this back and meet with any party you deem appropriate, but we, we did assess the site. It does not appear from the information we have, and it's on the document camera, if we want to look at it, that this site was identified in the New Hope Creek plan. There's no stream buffer on-site, there's no floodplain, there's no natural heritage area. There are small wetland areas that either need to be protected or modified pursuant to the ordinance standards. We have very stringent sedimentation erosion control and stormwater standards. There's a 30-foot buffer being provided as required by the UDO. So we feel like the potential impacts on the park have been mitigated, either through the site conditions or through the ordinance standards. But we, and we didn't hear anything tonight, that was something that was not previously addressed, so.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The, just to, can you help me understand again, the, I think you said this already, what is the relationship of this land to the floodplain and the, the New Hope Creek headwaters?
Sure. So the floodplain in there, I'm sure there's a graphic available that can, I think, help show this better, is considerably, the nearest floodplain is considerably to the east of the site. I would say at least 1,000 feet offsite.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yeah, the context map, which is...
Yeah.
Attachment 1, you can see it there on the east side of the Carolan Forest neighborhood. Not, not this one. It's, it's attachment 1...
Yeah, looking at it now.
To...
The context map?
The context map for this, for the zoning report, which is attachment 8. I'm sorry. Attachment 10.
I think you mean the overview map, Pat.
Attachment 3.
Yeah, I'm looking at it as, as it, it's coming up as attachment 1 on what we have here. Hold on.
1A, that would be the overview would also.
Yeah, there you go. This, this one here shows it. That's the floodplain on the right side of the screen. And again, the subject property is on the far left side of the screen. You can see the scale, the 500, the, about, 1 inch is about 500 feet, so it's well more than 1,000 feet.
Okay. Thanks.
And the area, one more quick comment. The area to the south and east, you can see the very, very corner of it, just the south and east of Pickett Road there, is the... West, I think west. Is, is the, I'm sorry, to the west, you're right. To the south and west of the site...
Yeah.
Is the, another floodplain area that's, I believe, Mud Creek, yeah.
Thanks. And the, yeah, I was going to ask the, the density compared to Solterra. Do you, and I believe Mr. Gosh has commented on that, the density is approximately the same as the density for this...
Yes.
For this development. There were some questions raised about notification. Can you talk about notification?
So all notification, as required by the ordinance, was, was provided. As Mr. Rutherford's alluded to, we have not notified, this is a direct translational zoning, so there's no, there's no cha, as you've alluded to, and other, other council members have alluded to, there's no change in the zoning standards. There's been a longstanding practice for at least over 15 years that we have not done extensive notification of partners, since there's no change in the zoning...
Yeah.
...requirements. We understand that when a property comes into the city, because of the availability of utilities, it makes development more likely. We certainly will look at potentially increasing or expanding that list of notified partners with these direct translational zonings, but we're following a policy that's been in place for a very long time. So we did not notify our DOST group. DOST is a group that typically, as one of the speakers alluded to, reaches out to the New Hope Creek Corridor Committee, and so they were not required to be noticed, they were not noticed directly.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I do think that's worth looking at, given the number of annexations we're getting lately, but thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments, colleagues? Councilmember Freeman?
I was just trying to understand, so when you, when you have, I guess, because the area down in the southwest, it kind of shows that they're building into the floodplain. And then on the northeast, there's also, like, building into a floodplain. Is that taken into consideration at all in the calculations that are needed to alleviate any 100-year flood issues that might occur? Because I'm understanding, from what I'm hearing from, from residents, is that there's been some concerns about the current, the existing level of flooding that's occurring, and noting that there's, there's quite a bit of development into these areas that are floodplain or ready. How do you calculate or attach some type of analysis around acknowledging that we're already building into those floodplains?
Right. So if there's evidence or information that the proposed development is going to significantly exacerbate an existing condition, our stormwater development review team tries to work with the applicant to mitigate that. But our ability to do that is, is limited, because it's a problem that's not being caused by this developer. So what this developer is, is saying that they've done analysis, and this is what's required by the ordinance, that there will be no increases in the 1, 2, and 10-year storm events at any point of analysis leaving the site. So there'll be no net impact, no increase in flow at those designed storms leaving their site. And so because of that, there was, there was no basis to require this applicant, or even request this applicant, to do offsite mitigation of an existing problem that predated, significantly predates. Some of these developments were done, you know, prior to the stormwater controls.
And then just noting that, I heard another question around the failures of those mitigation tools. Is there some, some way that we're checking, like, annually? I'm trying to make sure I'm answering that question, because I think it was raised around, if there is a failure that occurred in the stormwater mitigation that's occurring on-site, how is that reviewed?
Well, during the construction and development process that's handled by the County Sedimentation and Erosion Control Office, who do inspections on the site, I don't know the periodicity. We'd have to have those folks in here to get into more detail than that. After it's completed, there's a stormwater maintenance bond that's required and an inspection prior to the facility being, prior to it being CO'd. So I, there's a administrative mechanism to both ensure that it's functioning properly at the time of closeout of the project and in perpetuity going forward.
So annually, it's reviewed to make...
I don't know if there's an annual site inspection. Again, I would need someone from our stormwater team to speak in further detail than what I've given. But there's a, there's a bonding requirement that if it fails and it's not maintained by the HOA, that the city can come in, the city can have access to the property and complete it, and then hold the, use the bond proceeds to reimburse the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Any further questions or comments this time? I'm going to just make a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate the neighbors coming out, and thank you for staying with us so long. To me, there were a couple of important questions raised that, one is, is the question of notification, and as Mr. Young said, certainly the planning department followed our regulations. I do think that there is, I think we, we're frequently faced with the need to change, and I think that, given the frequency of annexations in these, what they mean, even though there's a direct translation of the zoning, I do think it's worth looking at that again, and I appreciate Mr. Young. that again, and I appreciate Mr. Young mentioning that. The, in terms of the concerns of the folks in Solterra, I very much understand that the folks in Solterra enjoy and love the beauty of the park that is right behind your neighborhood, and you have a wonderful neighborhood. And this annexation and the translation of the zoning to be the same zoning as it is now will allow another neighborhood, almost exactly the same size as your neighborhood, to also enjoy this park. And we have a lot of people moving to Durham all the time, and they need places to live. And we need to make sure that it's done well, and we have regulations to make sure it's done well. But I do think that we, I think that all of us who live here now wish that all of the nature that we have next to us could be preserved. I know that this is not built on now, this land, and, and yet, we ourselves have come here and built on nature. And so, I think it's really important that we be consistent in that way, and that we recognize that new people need places to live too. So, I especially appreciated the concerns that were raised around the issue of the New Hope Creek headwaters and the floodplain. But I am satisfied upon hearing the explanation and looking at these maps that there is, again, roughly 1,000 feet between the development and the floodplain. That's a long way, and that, again, gives me confidence that what we all agree is a cherished resource, won't be damaged by this development. In terms of stormwater, that's the other important issue, and we hear this a lot, and, you know, as the climate changes, stormwater becomes more and more of an issue. We know that. And as, not only the climate changes, but as we build, as we build impervious surfaces, it creates, stormwater needs to be managed. And we have, in the city, I think, very good regulations for the management of this stormwater. It is true that there are times when stormwater facilities do fail. It's certainly true. But it's also true, as Mr. Young said, that we have an inspection system, that we have a system of bonds, and I have seen the system in operation over many situations over a long period of time, and I've seen these bonds come into play, and I have seen stormwaters, I have seen the failure of stormwater systems that have need to be corrected, and it's not impossible that that would happen. But I do think we have good inspections and assurances in place that they, that would be corrected. They don't often fail, but they do fail on occasion. So, given this, I'm not inclined to support a delay. I think that none of the concerns I've heard, and I'm speaking only for myself, not for my colleagues, rise to the level that I think that a delay would be a good way to get at change. I think that the, or to get at something better. I think that the, I think that the density on this is quite reasonable. I think that the distance from the floodplain is far, and I don't think the stormwater concerns are any different than we have in any development in Durham all the time. In any development, we have these same stormwater concerns. So, those are, those are my comments, and I welcome any comments that our colleagues might make, and then we will close the public hearing and proceed to a vote. Councilmember Caballero, and then Councilmember Reese? Sorry.
I would just like to say that I would actually be in favor of a delay, partly because the checks and balances that we do normally play, put in because it's an annexation, did not happen. I am concerned that DOST did not get a chance to vet this. I am concerned that the New Hope Creek Corridor Committee folks, who did an excellent job on Patterson Place and were able to get a result where everyone was happy, the developer and the folks who were, had environmental concerns, and so, although I may get outvoted, would propose to do a delay.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to second Councilmember Caballero's remarks and adopt that position as my own. Our four local jurisdictions came together to protect the New Hope Creek Corridor at around the time, I may still have been in college back then, Mr. Mayor, so it's been some time. And integral to their plan was the creation of what ultimately became Hall Rock Nature Park. And I don't think that the southern portion of Hall Rock Nature Park, that is the portion south of the Pickett Road that is of gravel right now, is necessarily at risk from this potential development. But I think the northern portion deserves some consideration. The developer is attempting to develop a piece of property that is adjacent to that portion of Hall Rock Nature Park, and as Mr. Gosh has ably advocated, they are required to follow the city's requirements when it comes to stormwater, buffers, whatever the other, you know, impervious surface, et cetera. My position is that, given the proximity of this particular piece of property to the, adjacent to the northern portion of Hall Rock Nature Park, that it deserves some additional consideration. And that's why I believe a delay is appropriate here. We have seen the folks at the New Hope Creek Corridor Advisory Committee work well with developers in other situations, and they meet on the second Thursday of every month, which is coming up not too far from now, in, let's see, in January, and I think a delay would be appropriate to allow the developer to go to the advisory committee and talk to them about their plans, and see if they can work something out that's amenable to all the folks that are having concerns here. And that's how I intend to vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Other colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate the concerns raised by both my distinguished colleagues, Council Caballero and Council Reese. However, I do not feel that this development does violence to the original intent of said organizations. I was listening very carefully. I'm convinced, I, well, I don't know what more based upon what I've heard from the staff thus far, unless they want to add anything, that we will learn during the period of a delay, what study we would commission, what fears would be allayed. And I'm certainly open to hearing that, if there are some substantive matters that can be uncovered with a delay, and how long that would be. But I'm satisfied with the information we've gotten from staff and from the developer, that the original intent of that conglomerate of interest that came together to produce this beautiful park, no violence is being done to that intent, at least as far as I'm concerned, and I will support the development. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Councilmember Middleton. Mayor Protem?
No, no, thank you, I didn't.
Okay, Councilmember Freeman?
I would also agree with Councilmember Caballero and Councilmember Reese as well. Noting that the noticed information has not been shared with many of the folks in the neighborhood, that and that alone leaves me cause for pause, and I would acknowledge, even if it were just a two-month delay, I would be willing to make that motion if you felt like it was appropriate.
Well, it's clear to me that, what I'm, what I'm seeing, I haven't heard from Councilmember Austin yet, but we're down here from Councilmember Austin, I hear at least three people who are interested in a delay, and I think that's good enough for me. I'm gonna keep this public hearing open, and I'm gonna keep it open until, Councilmember Reese, when did you say that the, that group meets?
Well, they are scheduled to meet the second Thursday of every month at 5:00 PM. As he well knows, he's put his thumb up. I can't tell you for certain whether or not they have a meeting planned for January, but they have every other January in the list of minutes, so I suspect it'll be.
All right. I'm gonna continue this, this public hearing until February 3rd, and that will give anyone interested a chance to talk to the folks at the New Hope Creek Corridor Study Group. And as usual, collective wisdom is a good thing, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts. Councilmember Austin, did you want to add anything, by the way?
Well, I think that Mayor Protem had a comment as well, but you are, you are moving in the direction that I was going.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is not to burden them on the process.
I just want to know what's gonna happen. I mean...
In the interim?
What, yes, what are we, what is the effect of the delay that we are...
I think that the, I think that the neighbors will need to go to the New Hope Creek group and talk to them, and if you want to have further conversation with our planning staff, Mr. Young, do you have any thoughts, comments?
I would just make a request. If there's interest in continuance, staff has some, a number of conflicts on the evening of February 3rd. We didn't have any other items scheduled that we, could we ask for either the meeting before or the meeting after?
A meeting after.
February 17th.
February 17th. February 17th, then, the public hearing will be continued to February 17th, and we'll look forward to seeing you all back here. Don't plan on everybody getting up and talking again, I can tell you that right now. Okay. Thank you all very much. I'm gonna continue this public hearing to that time. Colleagues, we're now going to go back, unfortunately, to item 16, and we'll hear from our attorney. We need to take one further action.
I apologize to the members of council. So, I thought that when the council voted down the consistency statement on the FLM amendment, that that would moot the second motion, but my esteemed colleague and land use guru was watching the meeting and said, you know, you guys need to vote on the second motion, so if we could go back to...
Uh huh, sure.
Item number 16.
All right, colleagues, we're back at item number 16. Excuse me, friends, we have two more items of business to do, and it's gonna take us a while, so we're dying to go home, so y'all could take the conversations out, it'd be awesome. If you want to stay and enjoy the rest of it, though, feel free. All right, motion two, to adopt the ordinance of ending the comprehensive plan. Is there, someone like to make a motion with the intent of voting no, I would assume? Madam Clerk, could you please open the vote? We're on item 16, motion two.
Okay.
Everybody with me? Please close the vote.
And the ordinance fails 0 to 7.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Madam Attorney and Mr. Young, and now we'll move on to item 18. This is the Urban Avenue Street Closing and Development Agreement, and we'll hear from Ms. Struthers.
Good evening, I'm Ms. Struthers with the Planning Department. So, regarding Urban Avenue Street Closing, due to a high degree of uncertainty around the timing of resolution regarding issues associated with the street closing plat, staff recommends the public hearing be closed and the item referred back to the administration. Once all outstanding issues, including those related to the location of Duke power easements and related concerns, have been addressed, the item will be re-advertised and rescheduled. The staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Does that require a motion?
To, you would have to close the public hearing.
Close the hearing?
You close it.
Did I, did I, it was...
You can close it.
It was, it was left open.
I will now close the public hearing and refer this back to staff.
Correct.
Is that all you did?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Just close it.
I don't believe there's any more business to come before this body. I'm gonna declare this meeting adjourned, 12:02.